Welcome everyone to our superintendent and board recognitions. We will start today with VIPS Partners in Education, Mr. Hendon.
Okay, all right, there we go. Good evening, everyone. Hello, everyone in the back. Firstly, I would just like to start by saying, look, we made it. You know, it's December, so let's give ourselves a round of applause for making it through a crazy year. But today, we have spoken to principals all across the district. And they have all uttered the same truths, that there is a need for young professionals and college students to get involved in our local schools. And I'm glad to say that VIPS has responded to that call today. And that is why I would like to introduce you to Alpha Tau Omega, the largest fraternity, Greek fraternity at LSU. They have some amazing values. These, I went to their website and it was staunch in history, just loaded with so much community service. And after talking to their community outreach chair, it was, it was a non-factor. Like we, it was a match made in heaven, basically. And so they have basically committed themselves to becoming reading friends, to doing group projects in our local schools, and some other great stuff that we have planned down the line. So y'all stay tuned for that. But I'm gonna let them say a few words now, and I'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Lucas Millian, the outgoing president of Alpha Tau Omega. I just wanted to thank y'all for everything, giving us opportunities to help out in the community. It's something that we appreciate and a lot of people take for granted, but we want to give back as much as we can. And that's part of our core values. And so we want to, you know, do as much as possible in the short amount of times we're in college.
How y'all doing? I'm Jake, I'm the outgoing vice president. You know, actually doing something where you feel the impact, you see the impact that you're making on the community. Something we actually strive to do, stuff to where it doesn't feel like you're doing work. You know, you're actually doing something that is beneficial, something that's helping people. And what's better than investing in our future, investing in children, making sure that they have the right resources, have the right things, things to help guide them along. I know COVID definitely set a lot of kids back. So being able to aid them and help them as much as we can is something that we love the opportunity to do. And we really appreciate, you know, Scott and everybody else giving us a chance to do that. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Let me just add at the end, when they came to Buchanan for their literacy day event, they came in droves. It was scary. I was like, oh my God, they have an army. So these guys, they have some good stuff. They're great. But thank y'all.
Well, we appreciate you. Stay right there. We got Mr. Godey would like to give you a little something.
Yes, I want to thank you. I graduated too from LSU. I was a Sigma Chi, so don't hold that against me. But I greatly applaud you because I don't know if I had the time to do all of that at the same time when I was in college. But thank you very much. Thank you for giving back to community, and you will make a difference. And in recognition, I'd like to present you with these medals from the board and the superintendent. And thank you for all your hard work. And we're gonna take a picture.
Thank you. We move now to item two, Christmas card winners, Mr. Joffreyon.
Good afternoon, board. President Tatman, Superintendent Narcisse, it is with great pleasure that we do this every year, this wonderful time of year. We have a great opportunity for our artists in the district. They provide us with the superintendent's Christmas cards, which are shared with you all quite naturally, as well as the superintendent. We had several schools involved in this this year and participated. And we've made history for this for the first time this year with the Christmas cards, as I'm aware of, since this has been inception. So we are going to start with the recognition of those winners. And we are going to start with our elementary winner, Amorat, I'm sorry, if I mispronounced this name and I did it right the other, two seconds ago. Amorana Terrence from Audubon Elementary School. And I wish we had them on the screen. This is her Christmas card that you received earlier this year. This is her card that she gave to all, well, which one, which was given to all board members and the superintendent. And we would like to give you a bag of cards yourself to give to your loved ones.
Our middle school winner is Drew Adusumili from Glasgow Middle School.
I'm going to show you his Christmas card, which I thought was actually one of the best ones I've seen in a while because he also included the branding of the district on his Christmas card too as well. And these are for you.
Thank you.
And I met you outside, but here's your medal from the board and the superintendent for all your hard work. And go Gators.
And for the first time ever, we have had the opportunity to have, well, make history as Arlington Prep, what has been the first time honored in any arts competition. And their 11th grader, Christian, Christian, sorry, I thought it was on this paper here, Christian Brumfield from Arlington Elementary. I'm sorry, Arlington Prep. This is his actual card that he designed. And he will get his cards as well. Congratulations, Christian.
Congratulations.
That's it. We thank you so much for participating. And we hope that you continue in all of those contests that come our way. And we hope you as board members enjoy those Christmas cards that came your way. Thank you again.
See you. See you.
All right, guys. There you go. Ready? One, two, three. Good job. Thank you, guys.
And last but not least, we have the CTEC awards, Mr. Niecase.
Good evening or good afternoon, President Tatman, members of the board, Dr. Narcisse. We're excited about the fact that CTEC had applied for and was awarded a Gabriel Award. So I'm gonna bring Ms. Sealy, Mr. Brandon up to kind of explain the process and what they went through, what they received.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Smith. I'm the director of safety workforce development and operational strategy at the Greater Baton Rouge Industry Alliance. And this year, we celebrated our 15th annual craft workforce development awards. One correction I'd like to say is, so y'all did participate in the process, but you were nominated, right, for our awards this year by ExxonMobil. And so while you can self-nominate, it's certainly a great honor to be recognized from those efforts from one of our members. And so our awards program is aimed to recognize contractors, post-secondary institutions, and our high school systems and the work that they're doing to train craft workers for a great future and a great industry. So we recognize the fact that CTEC was a nominee this year, one among few. When you think about how many high schools are in our entire region, right? So really great to be a part of that grouping. And CTEC placed in our merit category this year, which is really a testament to the work that they're doing. And really, we are really excited to see what new innovations will be on the forefront for 2023.
Thank you. And we'd also like, this is Chad O'Quinn. I'm Martha Sealy. I'm the executive director. Chad O'Quinn was the dean at the time, and now he is a workforce development coordinator working with the internship. But we couldn't have done this without Mr. Ben Niecase and Ms. Monique Scott Spalding and our new director, Amber Boyd.
Yeah. Wait one second. Yeah, we're gonna get a little.
We have medals for you. On behalf of the superintendent and the board, I want to present these to you.
Thank you so much for the impact that you've had on our students. And I know that we've got some great students at CTEC. Yes, we absolutely do. And I can attest for one in particular that we've worked with from CTEC that has gone on now to work at the nuclear plant. And he's gotten all kinds of credentials. And that would not have been possible if not for CTEC right there in the neighborhood. So I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
I'd like to open our meeting today with the invocation from Vice President Dawn Collins. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Bel Air Cadet introduced by First Sergeant William Alsabrook. Please rise.
God, we come before you humbly today asking you to preside over our hearts and our minds and our emotions as we do the good work of furthering public education for our community. All these things we ask and we pray. Amen.
Amen.
That's right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am First Sergeant William C. Alsabrook, Jr. I am the Army Instructor of all incoming freshmen at Bel Air Magnet High School. I bring to you greetings from Principal Verdi Baptiste, the faculty, staff, and administration, Mr. Tatman, Board President, Dr. Norcease, Superintendent of Schools, members of the School Board. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce to you one of the outstanding G R T C cadets at Bel Air Magnet High School. Cadet Second Lieutenant Freddie Davison is a sophomore. He is in his second year of G R T C. Currently, he serves on the battalion staff as the Battalion Operations Officer. He is a returning member of the infamous Drill Team, Color Guard, and Honor Guard. He has been selected as the Bingo Battagians' Let Two of the Year. He will be competing in the Let Two Board on November-- correction, February the 9th, 2023. He holds the rank of Second Lieutenant with a cumulative GPA of 3.6. He is also a member of the mighty Bingo Football Team. Upon graduating in school year 2025, he plans to become a chef and attend a local school majoring in culinary arts. His dream is to become a chef and own his own food catering business. Cadet Davison is the son of Tasha Rosea Freddie Davison II. Ladies and gentlemen, here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I present to you Cadet Second Lieutenant Freddie Davison of Bel Air Magnet High School.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One second. Wait one minute.
I have a medal for you.
Yes, sir.
Young man, on behalf of the School Board and the Superintendent, thank you so much for your service and your diligence and your hard work. I'm very proud of you as Vice President of the Board and the School Board Member for Bel Air High School. Thank you very much.
And I ask everybody, all Board members, to please log in to your account, your board docs, to make Ms. April's life a little bit easier. Righty. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District nine, President Tatman.
Present.
District four, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Present.
District three, Mr. Howard. District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson. District seven, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We now move to item B1, Meeting Minutes, Approval of the School Board Minutes of the November 17th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting and the December 1st, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting as published in the Official Journal. Moved by Ms. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Blue. Seeing no questions or comments from the Board, we go to the audience on the minutes. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, back to the Board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Minutes are approved. We move now to Information Only C, and we have a couple of items under there. The monthly financial report. Personnel changes. Public records requests monthly report. And then seeing no questions or comments from the Board on that, the number four, the 2021-2022 Audit Results. Ms. Lopez.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Norcease, I'm very pleased tonight for Post-Await Netterville to inform you of the presentation of our 2022 Audit Results for the Year.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Strebek. I am the Director for the Engagement. I work at Post-Await Netterville here in Baton Rouge. I'm joined by two of my colleagues tonight, Freddie Smith, who assists with the cold review on the Engagement, and then Megan Metzai, who is the Associate Director and she is the Manager on the Engagement. So we are here tonight to present the results of the audit. We are substantially complete with the audit. We are finishing up a few loose ends, but we are on track to file the audit by the 12:31 deadline. So just kind of an overview of the audit results. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive. So that is a clean audit opinion, which is, you know, very important for an organization to have as far as, you know, when the independent auditor comes in. We do want to point out that we, as auditors, provide reasonable but not absolute assurance. We do not come in and test 100% of transactions. We wouldn't be able to leave if that was the case. So we do sampling, and we do have materiality and different thresholds there. But overall, it was an unmodified opinion. One of the largest changes and considerations-- it was an unmodified opinion. One of the largest changes and considerations this year is related to the implementation of Gatsby 87 for leases. That's a new standard that applied this year. So we worked with management with regards to the leases that y'all do have. They're not very significant. A lot of your activity, you know, y'all pay outright for. You're not leasing a significant amount of buses or copiers or buildings or anything like that. So we evaluated that, and it did not have a material impact to the financial statements or to the disclosures. But it was considered. We also spent a lot of time looking at your federal dollars. Federal dollars are a significant amount of the revenue that comes into the School Board each year, and so we are required to evaluate those programs to determine which ones need to be audited in accordance with Uniform Guidance. So this year, there were three programs that were selected. The first one is the Education Stabilization Fund, which is ESER, which is the more common terminology that everybody's used to. That was approximately $70 million. We selected Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant of approximately $5 million, and then FEMA Disaster Grants was approximately $5 million. And so through that process, you know, we have to look at compliance, and we look at internal controls. We do not give an opinion on internal controls, but we do evaluate those. And so those were also a clean audit opinion. There are no findings related to the federal programs. So overall, your federal revenues were approximately $169 million for fiscal year 2022. So as I mentioned, there were no financial statement findings. There were no significant audit entries that were identified as a result of our procedures. There were no audit findings related to the federal grants. A new area this year was related to the statewide agreed upon procedures. So that came, that was all kind of hiatus during COVID. Those are procedures that are required by the legislative auditor, and those procedures are listed out here. There were two minor exceptions related to sexual harassment training, just due to employees not being available for that at that point. What I do want to point out about with the statewide agreed upon procedures is that is not the same thing as an audit. So that's, you're not given an opinion that results in yes or no. It's very black and white. Here are the procedures. You either have it or you don't. And those procedures require us to take a deeper dive into the numbers, to look at more transactions at a lower level in policies and procedures. And so I was very pleased to see, you know, very minimal exceptions during this process, you know, given such a large school district with a lot of activity, to see that collections were clean and expenditures were clean that we tested. We didn't have any exceptions to that. That's really important. And so again, as I mentioned earlier, we do look at your internal controls, and we do evaluate that, and there were no recommendations from that point. We do have one other management letter comment related to some school activity funds. So school activity funds range at the high schools for athletic events, fundraising. There's just a lot. There's more dollars that are coming and going there. As part of your internal audit process of the school activity accounts, there was an instance of potential misuse of funds, of dollars. But again, that was caught through your internal process and your review of that, and that has been fully vetted and evaluated. We are required to report that because it is misuse of funds over $1,000 threshold. So that is a requirement, but it has been resolved. And again, I do want to point out that that was identified by your own internal control policies and procedures. One thing that has kind of changed with the school activity accounts, which I think give y'all a greater level of internal control, is related to the implementation of positive pay at all of the schools. That has been very beneficial. And then also changing how frequently y'all review the school activity accounts at the high school level, because generally, that's where the most dollars are that are coming and going, or at the high school. And now that's done annually versus in the past, it was more on a rotation type basis. Let's jump into the numbers a little bit. This is a schedule that shows just the general fund statement of revenues and expenditures. So your total revenues for fiscal year in 2022 were approximately $501 million. Your total expenses were $488 million. There were transfers in and out related to some indirect costs and things like that. And so that gets you to what we call the net surplus, or in the for-profit world, the net income, and you were at approximately $21 million for this year, which is an increase of eight, from over the prior year where you had 18.8. So what we're seeing here is a trend, an increase in your sales tax revenues. You're seeing some increases in your MFP, but you're also seeing some, you know, the budgeting that's being done for expenditures and making sure that things are, you know, right sized for the organization, so that you're starting to see some of these benefits and able to have the surplus at year end. Yes?
Thank you. Just one quick question. On the total revenues, is this general fund revenues or total, including all the federal funds and grants and everything else?
This is just the general fund piece.
Okay. Because I just want people to understand that.
Yes, this is solely the general fund for your, your normal everyday operations. The majority of your federal grant money that you receive is dedicated for specific programs, and so that's, that money is on a reimbursement basis. So what you spend is what you're able, you know, what the budget is, is what you can spend. So it has more of a wash.
Okay. And so, but that number, if my memory correct, runs around $200,000, uh, $200 million?
Your federal revenues last year, I think, were about $170 million. So close, yes. But a very large number. And a lot of that was ESER.
Yeah, so I'm, okay, I'm just trying to compare that to the, to the surplus.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna look at the surplus on a few more slides where you can really see the, the growth in the surplus year over year, and then kind of how that's broken down and allocated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gode. Vice President Collins.
Does your review, and I imagine it doesn't, but I just want to make sure I understand, does your review include analyzing shifts in spending from the general fund to ESER dollars?
Yes. So we do, the, the concept of like supplement versus the plant about whether or not you're taking, using federal dollars to supplement where general fund dollars are, that is part of our compliance testing for those programs, and we didn't see any instances of that during our testing. So.
All right. I ain't gonna put you on the spot. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. You can go on.
The next slide shows the general fund operating reserves, which is a, you know, a key indicator of health and growth and things like that. And so y'all do have an internal policy of trying to keep about approximately 15% operating reserve related to the revenues. And so for 2021, y'all were at approximately 15%, and then it's moved up for 2022 to 18%. So you can really see, you know, if you're looking at it historically from 2018 to 2022, where, you know, there was a dip in 2019 related to some additional expenditures and some charter schools that came online those years, to where it's trending back up. And so I think that's important to point out from, you know, the health of the entity and, you know, management monitoring things, is that you are trending back up and above where your internal threshold is. This slide shows the fund balance of all the funds. So this is going to include the general fund, all the federal dollars, which we refer to as special revenue funds, and then it's also going to include the internal service funds. And so you can see for 2022, you ended the year with approximately $272 million compared to $201 million. So I want to kind of point out the bucket. So that pink bucket at the very top, that 1.5, that's related to like the value of inventory. So that's not really like dollars that can be spent. That's just kind of segregated out. The green area is approximately $131 million, of which approximately $121 million relates to grants and property tax and like the tax propositions and things like that. There's approximately $7 million in there related to school activity accounts and $2 million related to child nutrition. The yellow bucket is, it's called assigned, and that's really related to like the self-insurance funds and things like that, where y'all have to withhold a certain amount for that for specific purposes. The blue area is unassigned. So this is for general purposes. This isn't tied to a grant. This isn't tied to a donor. So you ended the year with approximately $57 million, which is up almost $18 million from the prior year. So I mean, you can see there's, you know, positive movement there as well. And then the purple is related to the internal service fund. So a lot of this shift in this increase is related to a couple of different things. Y'all did see an increase in your indirect cost reimbursement related to the ESER funding, which was driving a lot of that. And then also, I do want to point out that this year, through continued efforts on collections from the 2016 flood, y'all did receive an additional $5 million from FEMA. So the way FEMA works is that, you know, they only pay up to 90% less the insurance proceeds. And then if they decide that they're not going to approve what they call a project worksheet or a PW, the general fund has to cover those costs, and that's kind of where it lands. And so that's just been an ongoing effort. And, you know, thankfully, y'all were able to get an additional $5 million this year. The next slide's not quite as pleasant to look at. It's a little bit different where we're seeing, you know, the, the deficit. So just to put this in a frame of reference, this is what we call net position. So this is not your everyday tracking of expenditures where, you know, you're budgeting for revenues in the current year and expenditures in the current year. This is where you have to put all your long-term assets, so all the buildings and depreciation, and then you have to put all of your long-term liabilities on there. So your biggest long-term liabilities are related to your pension cost and your insurance, your health insurance cost, and then also some claims payable, you know, because y'all are self-insured. So there's a great deal of liability, you know, for the future liability that has to go into these numbers. And so that's what's shifting the yellow, which is the unassigned, to a deficit. I do want to point out that all governments are in this position. There's just no way to fund all of the healthcare cost and the retirement cost for all employees. So every entity that, you know, we are auditing and looking at, they're having this deficit. So this is, this is where the accounting numbers lead you, and this is what it is. You can see that there was improvement in the deficit year over year. A lot of that has to do with the change in the estimates for the pension liability and the retirement liability. So those are your biggest estimates on the financial statements. We spent a time, a lot of time looking at that to ensure that, you know, the actuary that's being used is reputable, the inputs that go into that, like the payroll cost and the retirement cost and things like that, all those pieces are going in and that they're reasonable. The discount factor is a real big driver of that as well. And so I would, you know, I would tell y'all that seeing this improvement in the deficit is not something that you're necessarily going to continue to see year over year. I don't expect to see this, you know, go back above the zero line, but this is just kind of where it landed from the calculations with the information that you had as a fiscal year in 2022. So this is, this last slide I have is just some of the required communications, just to kind of like recap our role in the audit and our responsibilities. So again, we provide reasonable but not absolute assurance. We are required to be independent of the School Board as part of our procedures and our testing, so we always verify that internally. I mentioned earlier about the implementation of the new lease standard. There are also two new standards that are upcoming in the next year that we will continue working with management on, just to make y'all aware of that. As I mentioned earlier about the significant estimates, your total pension liability was approximately $385 million. I mean, the OPEB was $385 billion. The net pension was $287 million, and your claims payable were approximately $15 million. So those are very large numbers. Those are, you know, the first two really need to be looked at as like future benefits for your employees as y'all are trying to, you know, pay that out. But those are very large numbers. There were no disagreements with management or no issues with obtaining the information. We work with many, many departments in the School Board, whether it, you know, we start with finance, but then we're in payroll and HR, IT, the program directors. There's a lot of individuals that go together to, on a daily basis, to assist getting these numbers where they are, to also make sure that the numbers are accurate and the information is clean and easy to follow. And so I want to commend everybody for that. I know that's a great, great, great effort that goes into this. We will obtain representation from management. Just saying that we obtained all the information. Certain things don't necessarily go through the accounting GL. They're gonna, that information, you know, whether it's a contract or a subsequent event or things like that, we do request that. We also want to point out from a non-audit services, so as I've mentioned earlier about independence and what we can do, I should have pointed out this earlier, when you look at your financial statements, the only part of that financial statement packet that relates to Post-Await Netterville is the actual opinion. Everything else is the result of management. Management provides that information. They take responsibility for that. We do provide non-audit services as far as helping kind of compile it all, just to kind of get it all together, and then also with the data collection form to the federal government. So I do want to just take a moment and, you know, commend the School Board on all of their efforts and also how well, you know, internally, the different departments are communicating and assisting with this process so that we are able to be here on, you know, December the 15th with plenty of time before the deadline and have, you know, the audit substantially complete. We do appreciate that. And we, you know, we're very appreciative to be involved with the School Board and assist y'all through this process. And so one other thing I do want to point out is, last year, the School Board also did receive the GFPA and the ASBO Award Letters, which is a great, you know, a great representation of the work that goes into everything. And so I know that they'll be applying for that again this year, and we expect no, no differences in the results from that as well. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lannis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also thank you. This is a, an amazing presentation. I just wanted to ask a simple question. In your expert financial opinion, our school system is in sound shake. Is that what you're saying?
The, the information and the numbers that we're looking at are adequately supported. We, you know, we're not seeing significant deficits in any of your funds, which would mean that there would be overspending. You know, everyone is facing challenges, obviously, from a, as costs are rising, payroll costs are rising, revenues are tighter, you know? So I mean, it's a constant balance of trying to balance that. But when you look at the numbers, as of June 30th, you know, there's no significant deficits and there's no significant, like audit issues that have popped up that would like give us, you know, concern about the accuracy of these, this numbers.
Understood. Is Ms. Lopez in the building?
She is. She was.
Ms. Lopez, I just want to say, I commend you. Thank you for the amazing work. You keep us out of trouble, and you make sure our books are balanced and clean. So I just wanted to say kudos to you, kudos to HR, and anyone else that helped to compile this information. I know it's a dueling process, but I just want to make sure that we show some love to the people who help to make this work flow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lannis. Mr. Gode.
Thank you. Mr. Lannis took basically what I was going to say, so that's fine. But I also would like to include our Internal Audit Department. That is a group that very seldom gets any recognition, because when someone hears internal audits coming, they run for the doors. And they provide a very valid, valuable service to us, and I just didn't want them to go without mention. So thank all of you for the hard work that you do, and we really appreciate it.
And the, the Board is clear. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
We move on now to Item D1, Update from the Superintendent. Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you, President Tatman. Just, I wanted to share a few things and then also just provide a few updates to the community and to the Board. One is, as a reminder, all EBR schools and sites will be closed on Monday, December 19th through Monday, January 2nd for the holiday break. Will reopen on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. So we are working, we will not be working during those times, but there'll be activities that will be going on throughout the city. And so we want to make sure everyone knows when the school offices are closed. One of the things also we want to update on is on security. I know the Board worked to make sure that we provided more security, especially what happened in Uvalde, as we began to look at what our circumstances are. So we've been pushing very hard to be able to provide updates. So to close out the 2022 year, I would like to provide just, just a small update as we're continuing to work on getting officers in schools. Our average daily count of school resource officers that are working daily is 14, with 18 school resource officers continuing to support on the days with the most coverage. We have added a total of eight new school resource officers that are representative of the offices, the Sheriff's Office, the Constable's Office, and BRPD. We've seen a substantial decrease in weapons found in schools and major fights. We've also held several active shooter trainings hosted by Homeland Security and LSU, as well as NCBRT. And we've also worked hard to make sure that we can secure the perimeters in schools with lists looking at where the most targeted areas are of challenges in our city. And so we wanted to continue to let the public And so we wanted to continue to let the public know that we're working very hard to make sure that we keep our students safe as well our faculty and staff and are continuing to move towards providing more updates on that. The, the other update I want to provide is, oh, yes.
You had a question, Ms. Dyson. Dyson.
Yes, it's actually more of a statement. I just wanted to thank you and our team. I know that I've been really making you work really hard on this and, and, and I appreciate all the efforts, the, the long phone calls, the meetings and all that have taken place to get us to where we are today. We're not where we need to be, but at least we are working towards that goal. I am very pleased that we're growing that. I want to make it clear, it was misstated in the advocate and also in the campaign that we had given up on the idea of actually hiring our own staff to man these posts at our schools and, and for our school's safety. And I want to make sure that everyone knows that that is not the case. We have not given up on that. In fact, at a meeting, we clearly discussed that it was a stopgap measure that we were going to be doing in order to, to get us to the point where we could be fully staffed ourselves. And in no way was this ever intended to, as, as has been definitely misled to the community, this in no way is negating our contracts, our existing contracts and, and team that we have already through the sheriff's office and the Baton Rouge PD. This is not in replace of those contracts. This work that we're doing is in addition to, and they are helping us grow this while we continue to research and work through all of the legalities of building our own manpower on this effort. So thank you so much. I just wanted the opportunity to thank you, but also to encourage you to continue this push. And it's critical because my true belief is that we cannot even think about educating kids until we can maintain that we know that we have their safety and our community's safety first and foremost. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson, and thanks for your leadership on that.
Thank you, Board Member Dyson. So the other announcement, which I'm very excited about, we are thrilled to announce that EBR has been awarded the T-Mobile Digital Equity Award for $2.3 million. This, this award will directly support student engagement and teacher outreach efforts, which authentically improves student outcomes and narrows the digital divide. Upon receiving this award, EBR can accept a plethora of support from T-Mobile, including an implementation team, best-in-class strategies, and a knowledgeable team of industry experts to ensure this initiative is successful. I'd like to extend a very special thank you to EBR's Director of Technology Resource, Terica Jameson. Terica, are you here if you could just stand? And also a T-Mobile Senior Education Government Account Executive, Dan McGarvin. I know, Dan, you're here. All their hard work, leading this initiative to improve the district's entire technology ecosystem. So at this time, I'd like to bring up the T-Mobile Public Sector Representatives to present our technology department with this award. And I think their whole big team is here with a big check for us. And I will, as I shared to them, I'm always a fan of accepting checks for kids. So if you guys come on up, I'll let you come up and say anything to the board. And after that, I'd like all board members to come down. We'll take a picture with them for that.
Thank you, Superintendent and President of the Board, Tatman, and distinguished members of the board. Yeah, pleasure to be here. You know, T-Mobile is a company that is extremely committed to bridging the digital divide. Today, we're, we're connecting over 4 million kids to the internet, working with school districts like yours to really, you know, change the outcomes of students and really, it's really about student achievement. And this is an area where we've invested, dedicated to invest over $10 billion of our own funds in the next five years to make a difference. So we're working with school districts all over the country this. You know, COVID, the COVID pandemic made, made, made this problem that had existed for a long time just that much more visible. And, and many school districts like yours, you know, you know, started doing something about it. And one of the things that we love about the work that, that you guys are all doing here in East Baton Rouge is, is you're really, you know, you're really doubling down, right? As the pandemic ends, you're thinking about how, how to make these things, these things sustainable and, and change the, the outcomes of students and for the long term. So this is a great opportunity for us to help, you know, invest with you and, and have a really strong partnership. And, and, you know, you, you guys are, are going to be deploying, connecting Chromebooks for, you know, with LTE to your high school students. And by the way, we're also seeing a trend that is beginning to happen that, you know, we're, you know, we started doing a lot of hotspots, you know, with students. And many schools that are, that are innovating are, are starting to go out and start connecting laptops and Chromebooks and provide a child that has a device that it's under possession the entire time that doesn't get lost. So be proud that you're one of the pioneers in this because this is a, a process that is beginning to happen. So you should feel proud about that. And this is, you know, to my knowledge, the, the largest deployment that we're doing in the state of Louisiana too. So, so much to be proud of, and, and we're proud of being here a partner with you on this. So thank you very much for investing in the students. And thank you, board members, also for the, for the support to this program.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Goddard.
Yes, I would just like to ask the president that we could suspend our policy on no placards and signs for this occasion so that they can present us with this check?
Sure. I think it fits within the size requirements. Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Mr. Lannis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'll say thank you. This is the type of partnerships and collaboration that we need across our district. And let's not stop here. Let's go reach for the sky. I just want to say AT&amp;T, you're on the clock. I think we're going to switch over to T-Mobile after this. But no, thank y'all so much for everything that you do. We appreciate it.
Hey, our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lannis.
I just want to also recognize our Chief of Technology. He's always in the background, Amy Jones. Just give Amy a hand. She's done a tremendous job leading the entire division. So we'll come down and accept the check. And also I'd like the whole board to come up just so we can take a picture with them. Come on up.
One, two, three. Get all of us at once on all three cameras.
Yes, so two more announcements. One is we're just days away from our inaugural Red Stick Basketball Invitational Tournament. We are excited to host student athletes, families, and fans who will be joining us from around the state and beyond on December 19th through the 21st. The games will be played at Estruma High School, Liberty High School, and Scotlandville High School. And we're encouraging everyone to attend during the holiday break. I believe there are about 42 teams that would be, and I want to just give a hand to our athletic director, Lynn Willis, and her team. If you guys, can you please stand so I can just recognize? This is a big, big deal, not only for our school system, but also we're bringing many folks from across the state to come back to Baton Rouge to be able to participate with students and their families. And we're excited about that. Last but not least, I wanted to just say, finally, as a superintendent to our, as many of you may know, this is our, for a few board members, this will be their last board meeting. And as superintendent, the relationship between myself and board members is a special one. And as we work together for the betterment of students and our school community as a whole, I've had the pleasure of seeing the passion and dedication of this board. So tonight, I'd like to take the time to honor those board members whose services will be concluding this evening. The collective amount of years served between these outgoing members show tenacity and commitment, if nothing else. But it also shows that their belief in our district and in our students, 41,000 plus and 6,000 teacher, faculty, and staff. And I am grateful for the dedicated time that they have all done on this board. I do not know any other board because you have been the board member since the day I've landed in Louisiana to serve. And I've been thankful for just being able to spend time and connect with you around this work. So I, we've put a little bit of a tribute video for many of you. Yes, you did not know about this. So I thought it'd be good for us to share a little bit of that with you. And then after that, I'm going to get up to the podium to say a little something. So would you mind queuing the video? So I figured I'd take the podium this way. Just wanted to say a few things. You know, most people do not know the work of board members and superintendents, but everyone has an opinion on how to do it. You know, the beautiful thing I learned as I was able to get closer to work with superintendents was to see what board members really go through. And all of you have had passion around the work. And also you've always been dedicated children, regardless of your questions. And the great thing is this school district should be thankful to have anyone that services because you had 41,000 reasons to get it right. And so I just wanted to publicly thank you. And so we figure we give you a few little things, even though I know it won't be the same because I know you loved hanging out with me all night talking about issues. So I'm going to pass you some plaques and medals for your service. So I would love for the public to just, every time I mention the name of those years of service, to give our folks a hand. And also I would welcome, if any board would like to say anything, it'd be a great thing that, I know we don't have a lot of time, but just to say just a few things because I believe you deserve that time for that. But I will put a time limit on you because we have a board meeting. President Tatman, you taught me well. So, so first, I'd like to recognize our board president, David Tatman, District 9, who has served from January 2011 to December 2022. President Tatman, please come down. And I will give you the superintendent's medal. And just please stand up here with your plaque when you get up.
I've always wanted.
Next, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President, Dawn Shanae Collins, District 4, who served from March 2016 to December 2022. Next, I'd like to have Jill Dyson, District 6, who served from June 2001 to December 2022, one of the longest-running board members in the history of EBR. Let's give her a hand. Next, I'd like to recognize Connie Bernard, District 8, who served from October 2010 to December 2022. Let's give her a hand. Next, I'd like to recognize Board Member Evelyn Ware Jackson, District 5, who served from January 2011 to December 2022. Let's give her a hand.
The thing that I'm going to miss the most is all of you who work in the school system and support our work every day, and the families and the students that I help. And the rest of it, I won't miss, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lannis. Okay, anybody else like to say anything? Anybody else? Ms. Ware Jackson?
Thank you. This has been such a wonderful experience. You know, it's, it's, it's been bittersweet, mostly sweet, though. And I appreciate having the opportunity to serve District Five and the entire district for, for this length of time. I never imagined that it wasn't on my bucket list of things to do, but it certainly has been a wonderful experience. And I'm just so appreciative of all the support from the constituents and everything that I've learned around education in the last decade, and all of the support from staff and board members throughout this time. And I just appreciate you all. I love you all to pieces, and I'm sure that for quite a while, on the first and third Thursdays of the month, I'll be thinking of you. So I appreciate your work, and I'm hoping that, that the district will move forward with the new board with a mindset that is so parent and student-focused, and things that will be in the very best interest of the district and, and of course, the entire parish. So I thank you and appreciate you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson, Ms. Collins, Vice President Collins.
I just want to say, I'm leaving the board, moving on to another, well, not a completely different chapter, but focusing on a professional transition to enhance the advocacy work that I've been doing long before I got on the board. And I just want to say that I absolutely appreciate the staff, because I've been an advocate for public education long before being an elected official. And sometimes it's just frustrating being an advocate and not seeing things come to fruition. But it's a whole different ballgame, even though you're just one of, of, of one of your board colleagues, when it comes to a vote, sometimes just having a conversation with a staff person, you can get things done, because it doesn't necessarily require a vote. And so this has been a very beautiful experience for me, to be able to actually get some things done in addition to having the passion and doing the work. And so I thank all the staff people, even the ones that may have thought I was trying to be personal, and I absolutely wouldn't. And to anybody who does feel that way, I do love you, and I love all of you, and I appreciate all the help that you have been to myself and my colleagues on the board. And I look forward to continued service for the children in our public school system and our community, because we're going to all keep fighting a good fight one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Tappman. So first of all, I just want to thank my family for making, or having to sacrifice, for giving me the sacrifice to, to take on this moment, to take on this opportunity. It's not something that I take for granted, that the community allowed me, as the youngest person ever elected to this board, Darius, to, to really, to lean in on what I believe was true and passion. When I ran for school board, there was a missing voice in my mind. There were no black men on this board. And so if I'd done nothing else, I hope that I've made other black men proud. I hope that I made kids see that anything is possible. And I hope that people will see that the work that we did, while it's not always easy, we don't always agree, we always don't get along. The work that we did was for kids. And so my, my message and my, my encouragement to the folks and to the board that's coming here is to always think about kids first, put students first. There's a lot of times that we have allowed adult issues to get in the way of progress of youth. And so I really would just like, like the next board to really focus in on what it means for students and how education can truly save lives, because education saved my life. To the staff, I don't want to call names, but I have to, have to, have to thank you personally, April. From the day one when I stepped foot on this board, you really, it was just something about you and your belief in me that allowed me to do this work for the last four years. I don't take what you do for this board lightly. I don't take what you have meant to me as a professional lightly. You have really encouraged me to move on to greater pastures and to continue to do work. So I don't want to call names specifically, but April, you are a gem, and people should appreciate you. To the superintendent, I know this work is hard. I know that you have gotten a lot of flack for the work that you do, but I see your commitment. I see your heart, and it's going to take someone with heart and vision to do this work, because it's not easy. To the people, to the district, to the folks who work in this district, you have a responsibility to literally change the trajectory in lives of young people. Don't take that lightly. Don't allow bad days, imperfect days, to get in the way of what you can do to change the lives of young people. There are people in this district right now that are fighting every single day to change the lives of students. Remember that. If you're mad at a person, or you have a personal beef with an individual, let that go for the sake of children. Literally, I'm a young man from a single-parent home who has, who's able to sit on this board because of education. Don't take that responsibility lightly. To my colleagues, we have had some fights. We have agreed, we have disagreed, but I don't take it lightly getting up every day to come to these meetings, to make the sacrifice, to do what we believe in our heart of hearts is best for kids. To District Three, thank you. I may be leaving this seat, but I'm not leaving the work and the advocacy that it takes to really change and what we need for evolution and revolution in education. So thank you guys so much for all of the opportunities to be here and serving as your school board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard and Ms. Dyson. Okay, we were going to let the people, yeah, it's okay. No, actually, if we're going to do that, Mr. Lannis?
Man, y'all are turning me into a softie. I'm really trying my best not to get emotional, because regardless of the battles we have inside of this room, everybody does it for kids. And you all have made me grow into a much better leader, because they're going to need it moving forward. And even though you all may not be here physically, your spirit will still be inside of this room, and the work has to continue. And I just want to personally thank each and every single one of you, no matter the differences that we served, problems we've had. I want you to know, I truly appreciate you. I love you, and God bless every single one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lannis. Mr. Baloo?
Thank you, President Tappman. And I know, better go fast, I know I'm on a time limit. I'll, I'll start with, I, I've, I've learned so much from all of you, and I, I have fond memories of all of you. I'll start with the youngest and, and Mr. Howard. You know, I thank you for the contributions you made to the board during your term. They've, they've been meaningful. And, you know, just give a couple of examples, the charter school accountability policy, you contributed your talents to, along with other people, in drafting that policy. And also, our, our board meeting policy, you know, some people talked about how we had meetings running into the, the morning hours, and we needed to become more efficient. And you, you played a big part in drafting some changes that have really helped, helped with our, the flow of our board meetings. And, and so I appreciate all that you've done. And, you know, Vice President Collins, I appreciate your, your passion and enthusiasm. I know when I, when I was the new person on the board, you know, my biggest fear was I'd say something that would make me look stupid. And you, you came on as a new person, and, and that didn't hold you back at all. You jumped right in and figured you would, you would ask for forgiveness later, but, but that's what made you such a good board member, was that, that passion and enthusiasm, and I appreciate it. For those that came before me, Ms. Ware Jackson, Ms. Dyson, President Tappman, and Ms. Bernard, appreciate all that I've learned from you. And, you know, some, some have talked about how this board has been contentious at times, but they kind of forget, you know, back when, when y'all first came on the board, there were, there were some pretty big battles you had. And I, I probably would, would not have been willing to serve on the board if you hadn't come before and, and, you know, accomplished a lot and had some really tough battles that made a big difference as far as professionalism on the board. And I appreciate all that you, you've done coming before me, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baloo. Ms. Dyson?
Thank you, President Tappman. I just want to start by thanking the constituents in District Six for the trust and opportunity to serve them for over 21 years. It's truly been the honor of a lifetime. From the very first night when I was appointed in 2001, I agreed to serve as long as I was making a valuable and productive impact. While I knew coming into this that it would be an incredible experience and opportunity to serve people and God, I had no true understanding of the limitless ways I would be blessed to make a difference in the lives of those in my district and across the parish. It has been a humbling and incredibly rewarding experience. I am proud of what we have accomplished for the children of East Baton Rouge, and I'm all, and I'll always cherish the friendship of my fellow board members, and there are quite a few from many terms. The administration, school site staff, and so many stakeholders across the district. In the last two years, we have mapped the course, accelerated our pace, and moved with purpose, conviction, and courage to put the wheels in motion on expanded pre-K, increased literacy and math instruction, expanded career opportunities, and improving teacher pay and professional development. And while we have only just begun, we are already seeing improvements and indications of improved outcomes for children across our district. In spite of the politics, the pandemic, the floods, and far too many obstacles to name, we are making progress for children. And that is why we are supposed to be here. The work that we have put in motion can have real results. If future boards stay the course. My time on the board is ending, however, that doesn't mean that I won't still be working to keep things on track, but in a different role. I'm convinced that God has some big things in store ahead. My final words would be to the community, outside interests, and the incoming board. This past election was nothing short of ripe with dirty politics by a few seeking control and power. It's not something that anyone should be proud of. As I've always conducted myself with the utmost integrity, with the safety, wellbeing, and education of our students, while building community re-engagement as my first priorities, I chose to run my campaign in the same professional manner, even when deceitful politics took place. I take pride in serving as an example of true leadership for our children and our My hope would be that the next board can not only put the divisiveness aside and other, and any other things that divide, including outside interests who want to control, to instead aggressively work, to come together, to bridge gaps that have existed for far too long, and ultimately caused our kids to find themselves many times on the losing end. I'm proud of the many programs that we have now dispersed across our district. District Six finally has so many of the opportunities that other districts across our parish have had for a long time. I'm proud of the new magnet programs that we brought. I'm proud of the increased talented and gifted classes, including the upcoming year, the, the pre-K gifted at one of our District Six elementary schools. We must continue with this kind of progress, and I look forward to celebrating the two new schools in the southern part of the district that are so very needed and can bring so many more from our community into our schools. I'm so, so proud of the work across the district, and, and we have a facility plan that I hope this board can move forward with in their first term, as we intended, in this first quarter of the first term of this next term, so that we can right-size our districts, so that we can provide opportunities at each and every school for the children we serve.
The work that we have put in motion can have real results. If future boards stay the course. My time on the board is ending, however, that doesn't mean that I won't still be working to keep things on track, but in a different role. I'm convinced that God has some big things in store ahead. My final words would be to the community, outside interests, and the incoming board. This past election was nothing short of ripe with dirty politics by a few seeking control and power. It's not something that anyone should be proud of. As I've always conducted myself with the utmost integrity, with the safety, well-being, and education of our students while building community re-engagement as my first priorities, I chose to run my campaign in the same professional manner even when deceitful politics took place. I take pride in serving as an example of true leadership for our children and our community. My hope would be that the next board can not only put the divisiveness aside and any other things that divide, including outside interests who want to control, to instead aggressively work, to come together, to bridge gaps that have existed for far too long, and ultimately caused our kids to find themselves many times on the losing end. I'm proud of the many programs that we have now dispersed across our district. District Six finally has so many of the opportunities that other districts across our parish have had for a long time. I'm proud of the new magnet programs that we brought. I'm proud of the increased talented and gifted classes, including the upcoming year, the pre-K gifted at one of our District Six elementary schools. We must continue with this kind of progress, and I look forward to celebrating the two new schools in the southern part of the district that are so very needed and can bring so many more from our community into our schools. I'm so, so proud of the work across the district, and we have a facility plan that I hope this board can move forward with in their first term, as we intended, in this first quarter of the first term of this next term, so that we can right-size our districts, so that we can provide opportunities at each and every school for the children we serve. We have been blessed with bold leadership, and I hope that will continue across the district. It is invaluable. We must continue to work for our students with our children as our ultimate priority. Thank you very much for the opportunity. It's been a ride. Thank you. And I thank my family, because they have grown. I remember when I first decided that I would run after being appointed, I remember my son at a swim meet saying, "But who's gonna be here to yell 'Go Neil'?" And the parents loudly said, "We will." And I have had tremendous help as a single mom doing this work. It's been so important to me. And I appreciate my family for all of the times they have wished that I was there. I was always with them in spirit and in mind and in heart. And this school system will be always in my mind and my heart and in my spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Mr. Godey.
Thank you. One of the detriments of going last, but I see Mr. Baloo jumped in behind me. One of the detriments of going last is everyone said many of the things before. But two things I wanted to specifically mention. One, I came into the board as an employee, and I really wanted to thank the board for having the faith in me to make that appointment, and also to thank the board for accepting me very quickly as a member and showing me the ropes. Because however much you think you might know about this job, you really don't until you get into it and figure out how things move. And I also want to thank all of you for having the confidence and letting me be your president for a while. And that was a very trying time, because that was all through the pandemic and doing everything with Zoom meetings and all of those sorts of things. Plus, just for added fun, we went through two superintendent searches in the middle of all that. And through all of that, we shared many different opinions as we go through. But one of the beauties about sharing many different opinions is the final opinion usually turns out better than any one person's opinion going in. And so, I really commend you on that, and thank you for the service that you've given to this board and the leadership that you've given to this community. So, thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godey. Mr. Baloo, you're on fire tonight. Okay, all right. Mr. Shamblin.
I debated saying something here, but I will say, I'll be the last, I guess. So, Wise Man once said, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service to others." And I sat here as I listened to you guys talk, and, you know, you guys baptized me. This is the board that taught me how to be a general counsel. And I want to say that each of you, in my opinion, lost yourself at some point in service and taught me something about serving others. And I want to thank you for that. I won't forget each of you. Each of you challenged me in a different way. Some of you pushed me to the edge, and that's a good thing. It, you know, it hones you and it makes you better. But each of you brought something to the table that improved me as a person, and it was through your service to the community. So, I won't say much else other than thank you, and I wish you well, and if you need me, you know I'm here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Shamblin.
President Tatman, that is my report.
Thank you very much. We, I'm gonna recognize Ms. Bernard for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask that Mr. Woody Jenkins, who's a former state representative in the state of Louisiana for 28 years, one of the longest-running members of the House of Representatives, who authored and pushed through many, many pieces of legislation that benefit our students in the state, and a proud graduate of Astrouma High School, if he would come to the podium and give us a couple of words. Mr. Jenkins?
Much, Mr. President, Ms. Bernard, and all members of the board. I am a graduate of Astrouma High School. And I was thinking the other day that everything I really have in life has come from three things: the Lord above, my family, and Astrouma High School. Everything, from the time I walked in those front doors, the opportunities that were granted to me. I met my wife there. I gained my profession there. I was able to be president of the Student Council, which led to being a member of the Legislature. The schools that we operate in this parish are so important. I want to talk tonight about something that you have done to make a lasting contribution to this community. I know that all of you come home late, and you get that phone call from a hurting parent or teacher, and you're so tired, you really don't feel like returning that call, but you do. And you're able to touch them, and you're able to make a difference in their lives. And for all of those personal, one-on-one things that you do almost every day, on behalf of all those people, I'd like to say thank you. But also, every once in a while in life and on a school board, you get to do something really great that impacts a lot of people. And I want to talk about one of those. At Astrouma High School, it has been one of the great schools in this community. It was the largest school in the state, almost 2,000 students, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, the greatest run of state championship football teams in the history of our state, also the first school ever to have honors programs in the high school, the first school ever to have a weight training program in high school in the nation. But over the years, Astrouma went into decline. It was declared a failing school. The state took over Astrouma High School somewhere around 2010. The state had no better success. Astrouma High School was down to fewer than 160 students. It did not have enough students to really have a budget that would pay for the teachers and staff that were there. And so, the decision was made by the state that it would be closed, and it was gonna be bulldozed. Now, think about North Baton Rouge, the area I grew up in where I still live, 40,000 people without a high school. There was no high school. It's like saying Central without a Central High School, or Zachary without a Zachary High School. There was no Astrouma High School anymore. But the Astrouma grads got to working, like Dr. Jackie Mills, and really thousands of Astrouma grads, because there are probably 15,000 in this community. They demanded something be done, and we had a new superintendent, Warren Drake. And Warren Drake made the determination, "We've got to change this. We've got to reopen the school." At that time, no school ever taken over by the state of Louisiana had ever been given back to a local school system. It had simply not happened. So, the probability of it happening was virtually zero. Plus, where would the money come from? There was no money. But he was very creative, and this board was very creative. You decided to make a difference. And so, you fought, and you worked, and you convinced the state of Louisiana, the Department of Education, to give Astrouma back to this system. And Mr. Drake came up with the plan to delay some air conditioning and heating, and came up with $30 million to build virtually a new Astrouma High School. Today, it's a shining example. And we can look at North Baton Rouge and 70805, and we can say there are 1,000 problems. But let me just tell you this: there is hope in that area because there is a Astrouma High School. Every great community has to have a great school around it to serve it. And if you have done more to turn around what's going on in North Baton Rouge by putting a Astrouma High School, a great facility with great teachers, great principals there, to build back that community, and I just hope this: think back, your accomplishments, the long hours, the fact that nobody's probably gonna thank you for what you did, the fact that nobody on this board is gonna ever get rich by being on the school board, it's not a political stepping stone for anybody. You never hear of somebody on the school board, they're elected to something higher, very, very seldom. But I just hope you have time just to pass by Astrouma High School, walk in and see the plaque on the wall that has your name on it. And I hope the people in North Baton Rouge will always remember that you have made a great difference to the 40,000 people living in North Baton Rouge. Thank you very, very much for what you've done.
And that was your point of personal privilege. Connie, you good?
Thank you, I'm good.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bernard. All right, we're back to the agenda. We now move to E1, Reports from Board Appointees to Committees or Agencies. Any reports? I'm not seeing any. So, we will now go to item F1, Consideration of Request for the Approval of a $2,000 Mid-Year Sign-On Bonus for Teachers Hired in January 2023. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence, and Exemplary Customer Service Funding Source, S R 2, Action 2. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Howard and seconded by Ms. Dyson. Seeing no comments from the board. Let me check my trusty card box here. Storm Matthews.
Good, you can see the Purdue. I've been told for 17 years LSU and Purdue would never be on the same field. It is happening, and I'm excited about that. I see that they have given you two options now, option B. I really like that it isn't just teachers, it's pulling everybody in, paras, bus drivers, anybody that was hired between October 1st and December 31st. I really appreciate board members taking up that comment for those teachers. I actually have a teacher that came to me who drives here from Mississippi to come. She taught here last year, got married, moved to Mississippi. She was trying to come tonight, but she couldn't get back. And she's driving here from Mississippi. And she, her hire date, I think, was October 14th or something, her new hire date. But I do hope that someone will pick up the question. I wanted to know how many people we hired between October 1st and, well, what will be December 31st, so how many people would this affect? Because option B does lower it from the 2,000 to 1,000. So, I didn't know if it was just a whole lot of people. So, because that is a budgeted amount, and we're using the leftover amount to do this, if we had hired so many people, if that's the reason why the number dropped, because it is including support staff and everybody instead of just teachers. And also, how many people are we hoping to hire in January with the blitz?
Dr. Finney.
Thank you. James Finney, 8121 Oaku Drive, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I'll say it once, I don't know if I'll say it another time I'm up here. If, as Ms. Matthews suggested, because I didn't have time to look at the backup on this, if there are two options offered to you, I would hope it's clear when you vote which option you are approving, or if you're given the superintendent the choice of two options. But mostly, I'm here to suggest that an ever-changing set of signing bonuses is not the solution if the problem is that we aren't paying people enough or don't have the appropriate working conditions for folks to want to work here. You've got to fix the salary schedule, or fix recruiting, or fix the respect that folks get when they work for the school system. That's at least as important as whatever you can accomplish with this very temporary stopgap signing bonus. And I would hope that there's not a gap where if people made the mistake of getting hired too soon, they lose out on that bonus. So, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Karonda Corley.
Good afternoon. I would like to talk about this mid-year sign-on bonus on the inequity as it relates to those that are employed in the special education arena. We are not doing a good job of making sure that they will receive equitable pay as it relates to coming into that area. As you know, we have been on the news multiple times about the shortage that we have as it relates to having people work with our children with disabilities. I've even been here every single meeting and committee of the whole reflecting on how my child just received one teacher last month. And that is not something that is legal, if you want to, if we want to be blunt about it, legal as it relates to our children with disabilities and adhering to all of the federal laws that embody them. So, I do think that we need to make sure that when we say that we're gonna give all teachers a certain amount of pay, that we make sure that those teachers that are working with our children with disabilities are receiving the same amount. And I'm not talking, I'm talking about those that just came to our school system, as well as those that came out of retirement. I think those that's coming out of retirement should actually receive a little more, a little more. I think it's a slap in the face when you tell our people that are coming from out of retirement that, hey, you may leave, you may lose a certain percentage amount of money that you're receiving from your retirement to come out, to come and work, and to help us in a shortage. Y'all not thinking about that, and that is something we need to think about. I want to make sure I take a personal moment of privilege to thank my child's special education teacher, Ms. East, who came out of retirement because she saw that each and every child deserves a proper, a proper education. And so, she came out of retirement to fill that void, and I do believe that she, along with other special ed teachers and staff, should be awarded and afforded that same amount of pay, and they should definitely be patted on the back, because it takes a special type of person to work with our individuals with disabilities, because they need a lot of accommodations and modifications that is sometimes hard to do, that they are doing out of their own pockets. So, I think that you should definitely take a moment to thank them, appreciate them, and show them some equity and fairness.
Tabby Jackson.
Did I say that right? Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Narcisse and board members. I want to say thank you for putting this on the agenda and offering this mid-year sign-on bonus, but I want to say it's not enough. As a former employee of EBR that worked here for 10 years, eight of them, I did not have a step raise. That is why I left this parish. My husband had 10 years in this parish, and eight of them without a step raise. This is not gonna bring either one of us back. This is disrecruitment money. You have to give these people a pay raise. That's the only, if you want to recruit and retain quality people, please do that, sir. I don't want to oppose this because I think that the people that have decided to come or will come, you need them to fill these jobs, so if this helps, great. But at the end of the day, please give these people a pay raise. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Back to the board. I may have, oh, Mr. Lannis. Yes, sir. Mr. Lannis.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I've heard some really, really good comments, and a lot of which I actually agree with. I do believe also that the stipends that we are currently receiving is not enough, and I would love to see that those are increased across the board. I'm not just talking about educators, I mean everyone, cafeteria workers, our bus operators, thank you, and so many other people who do great work on the front lines every single day. I think that's just a simple show of our appreciation to them. But something I do want us to consider moving forward, though, because this came to me from someone who actually left her school to come into the district, and she was expecting to receive a bonus, but she didn't because she missed that threshold by a few days. And because of that, she won't have any money to take care of her family during this Christmas time. And I understand this could be very trying times for a lot of different families. So, something I would like for us to strongly consider, and I guess I'm talking illegal on this. on this right here, is that we go back, possibly look at the policy that we approved a few months ago, and that we amended so that it's retroactive for anybody that are that close to that threshold, that left a job to come here under the guise that they will receive that bonus. And I know it may take some budget reallocation, but I think that it's fair for someone who has uprooted themselves to come back and be a part of this district, that we showed them that much, that level of respect. So that's just something I want to put out there. And I would love to talk about that with you, Ms. Hall, and also with the superintendent and the rest of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lannis. Mr., you want to go next? Yeah, I knocked you off the queue, I apologize. Mr. Goday.
Thank you, no problem, President Tatman. Ms. Hall, could you, I didn't hit my button to speak fast enough before we went to public comment. We now have an Option A and an Option B before us. And we did not specify in the motion whether or not we're doing Option A or Option B, I don't believe. So could you please explain what is Option A and what is Option B for us and the public?
Yes. So I'm going to move this up because it's taller than most people. Okay, so Option A was the original motion that was, or the original memo that was put for at the last board meeting on December 1st. It was a mid-year sign-on bonus for $2,000. So we had leftover monies from, I think it was August, where we had the sign-on bonus of 7,500 for core teachers, right? So we had some, a pocket of money left over. So we wanted to do another initiative for the second half of the, of the school year. So when we had the meeting the last time, it was proposed that we go back and research to see how much it would cost if we gave everyone $3,000, the $3,000 stipend. Based on the monies that I had left over, it was, it wouldn't be feasible to be able to allocate all that money to, for $3,000 per employee. So between October 1st, and I'm going to answer someone's question that came up here, between October 2nd until yesterday, 192 new employees were hired, not just teachers across the board. The goal was, is to try to maximize my resource by utilizing, you know, the funds that I have to make sure that I take care of the 192, plus to see if I could hire another 60 teachers up until January 31st. So with the funds that I have left, that will take care of it as $1,000 per, $1,000 payment per employee. So Option B would be $1,000 per employee from, who, if you're hired from October 1st until January 31st, 2023.
And the original stipends went through the month of September?
Um, yes. October 1st was a cutoff for the $3,000 stipend.
So I would like to make a substitute motion. I would like to move that we amend the plan because we just had the thing showing that we're in good budget shape and going through this. I would like to amend the plan to make this a $2,000 bonus for teachers and certified staff, and $1,000 bonus for the other employees for this timeframe that we come into here. I know it's going to be several, maybe $100,000 or something if we make that change, or maybe a little bit more, $200,000.
Does it currently stand based on what?
You said 192, but all of those are not teachers.
No, so the 192 was for all staff.
Right.
That was hired since October 1st.
So I would like to make the move that we amend that plan to be $2,000 for teachers and $1,000 for all other staff as a bonus. And to address some of the comments from the audience, we do have a commitment to make an 8% pay raise next year. We do recognize that stipends are not the way to go. And as you can see, we've done a very good job in being fiscally responsible to be able to have the money, hopefully to build, not hopefully, to have the money to be able to do that. So I would like to make that a substitute motion, $2,000 for teachers and $1,000 for all other staff from October 1st through the end of January. Is that the timeframe?
My apologies, yes. January 31st, 2023.
January, so that's, that's my motion, now I'll look for a second.
Moved by Mr. Goday, seconded by Ms. Dyson. We are now on the substitute motion. Oh, sorry, you said, yeah, okay, all right. Mr. Lannis.
Mr. Goday, what was the start date of October 1st?
October 2nd.
President Tatman, if I may. Instead of making that a substitute motion, I might ask if the original movers would accept that as a friendly amendment?
That would be Mr. Howard and Ms. Dyson.
I mean, I get, I need you back up here now because I was just going to take the substitute as what I would vote on. Based off of the friendly, soon-to-be friendly amendment or substitute motion, is your calculations inclusive? Like, do you have the money in your budget for that particular option to occur? And the reason that I ask is because I know that you just said that you're trying to figure out based off of your budget here. So would the friendly amendment or substitute motion be within your budget?
So within my own program, which is a strictly HR initiative, this funds, the funds that, 192 plus the 60, the 1,000 per employee would come directly from my budget. I would have to ask Dr. Bethley for assistance on that question.
Board member Howard, I believe this is an important space. We will be able to find the adjustment for that. So I'd like to, we'll, we'll work on making sure that we can find that.
Yeah, no, so I think that that would, I will accept the friendly amendment, but I think that that's something that, like, as, as a collective, like, we should, we shouldn't be thinking about what we're going to be able to do. Like, if that's going to be the option that folks want to go with, that's something that Ms. Hall should be able to come here prepared to say, X, Y, and Z is coming from X, Y, and Z, as opposed to just finding the money. So just, you know, I'm leaving, so it's y'all priority. But, you know, as you think about, like, just being efficient and conducting business in a way to where people are not making decisions, drastic decisions like that about money on the fly. So that's all I see. But I'll accept the friendly and allow folks to vote how they feel.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're on the primary motion that has now been friendly, very friendly amended. Mr. Shamblin.
Yes, I want to make sure the second accepts, the second accepts that amendment. Ms. Dyson.
Yes, I do. Wholeheartedly.
Okay. And that's it? That's all you got, Mr. Shamblin? Mr. Goday, you were, all right, and you had something? Yeah.
I just want to reiterate, I think, I can't remember, the teacher that was here. We, we want you back in EBR, I think she said, her and her husband, as. Ms. Jackson. So I just want to continue to reiterate this. As we said from the State of the School address, my goal is to, Ms. Jackson, make us one of the highest-paid school districts in the state of Louisiana. And so we will be bringing a budget with the board to make sure that we raise pay across this school system.
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. Ms. Dyson.
Yes, I just wanted to put another shout out to the incoming board that we also definitely have plans. And I'm hoping that you will see them through fruition. To, we've, we've done the extensive research on our salary schedules. And we do need to build in these raises into our pay structure, into our budget, this coming, for this coming, budget coming up. And so these really are just what we can do right now during our current budget is this, these stipends. And so that's why we've chosen to do it that way in the time being, but fully intended to work on that 8% coming in the next budget. So I hope you will consider that a priority as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. The board is clear. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote.
April, can you do a roll call vote? I mean.
Yeah, roll call vote. No worries.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Yay.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District 4, Vice President Collins. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District 9, President Tatman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, item is approved. We move now to Item F2, Consideration of Request for the Approval of an MOU template between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and various external healthcare providers to support the recruitment of exceptional student services power professionals to the districts. Strategic Alignment, Employee Development, and Recruitment. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Howard, seconded by Mr. Blue. Okay. Storm Matthews.
Mr. Tatman, before you go to the public, there was a form of the template submitted with revisions as requested by several board members. I want to make sure the motion to adopt is adopting, is adopting that template with the revisions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shamblin. Yeah, Ms. Matthews.
I had planned to have a couple of owners of health, home health agencies and some workers here, but I had a stroke last Wednesday. Another one, yeah. So, yeah, that kind of messed up the plan. So the fact sheet is very nice, very helpful. Yes, EBR does pay way more than home healthcare workers. That's one of the major reasons that they are so understaffed. One of the things that does leave me confused is it lists BRCC, Medical Training College, Delta College, et cetera, that we would be hiring from. But are we, when staff came up here, they said agencies prior. So are we hiring from home health agencies or healthcare training facilities? I think that would be important, especially since it's a template, which doesn't technically need to be passed into policy, but that's what we are doing anyway. If going through agencies, those individuals, people who work in home healthcare agencies, they don't go through these schools. If you're hiring LPNs, if you're hiring CNAs, things of that nature, yes, they do go to these types of schools. So, but if you're hiring home healthcare workers, they do not go to those schools. They pass background checks. I have forwarded the emails from the state of Louisiana and also sent staff called me a liar on the mic last board meeting. I also sent emails, because I bring receipts, the governor's executive order. And I have it here today, highlighted where you are allowed to live with the recipient and be the worker because of COVID and COVID only. But again, it's not clear as what's being communicated to staff, which is supposed to be the medical training. If you are training for a trach and you work for a home healthcare agency, they contract a nurse, and a nurse comes into the agency and does the training, and the training is under that nurse's license. So again, they don't go to BRCC, Medical Training College, Delta College, because you don't go to college to make $8 an hour. That's not, that's not, that's not what happens. So are we contracting to do this through home health agencies or through these schools for LPNs and CNAs and things of that nature? That is still not clear.
Ms. Coylee.
Okay, so this one is very near, oh, I'm sorry. Do you need me to introduce myself? Thank you, board president.
You could just say your name.
Okay, my name is Karonda Coylee. This is Corinth Coylee, proud parent and national disabilities advocate. And Corinth is a future self-advocate, but he's in training. And this one is one that is very much near and dear to our heart because this is something that would impact him in the school arena. On Tuesday, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education actually spoke about the revisions that they were proposing as it relates to healthcare in the school system. And that was actually deferred. And it was deferred because a lot of the things that they were proposing to do is not actually in line with the actual boards that actually certify and that those medical professionals actually have to answer to. So when you talk about these providers and the things that you're asking for, one of the things that the board requires is that they actually have to graduate from an accredited school. And not only do they graduate from that accredited school, but then they actually have to pass a licensure test. So if they are an LPN, a RN, or a nurse practitioner, they have to pass the NCLEX. And so after they pass the NCLEX, then, only then can they work as a healthcare provider. So we cannot have people, as you know, the law does now require all staff to actually be trained in seizure precautions. But when it comes to evaluating or assessing one of our students post epileptic episode, you actually have to have a nurse or a nurse practitioner to do the assessment. Medical assistants cannot legally make assessments. They can legally administer injections. They can legally administer some vaccinations, but they cannot legally do an assessment or an evaluation. So when you talk about healthcare providers, who would these healthcare providers actually be servicing? The board, central staff? Because they definitely won't be servicing the children with disabilities that have it written into their IEPs, mind for one. So I do think that that is something that you actually need to look at. If for any reason that you do not know the information, the board that Ms. Matthews spoke about, I do sit on that board, and I can provide you with information as well as I can connect you to the executive director, which is Ms. Julie Foster-Hagan, with the Office for Citizens with Developmental Disabilities, because we did actually address this on yesterday as well. And our information will be rolling out in January. So please, please, please know that there is so many criterias that is required in order for a person to provide services to individuals. And I used the example last time before of Mr. Howard providing an injection to Mr. Goday. He wouldn't want that, and we not going to accept it either. Thank you.
Dr. Finney.
Thank you. Before you vote for anything, you need to be clear that you understand what you're voting for. And based on the backup, I can't imagine that you would be clear what you're voting for if you support this proposal. I can't tell whether this is to try to identify paraprofessionals for special education students or medically-trained experts to work with medically-fragile students that may be in regular education classes but have medical needs that need to be attended to. I have no idea what kind of a blank check you're trying, that the administration is trying to get you to saddle the new board with. No, I won't stop this, Mr. Lannis. You can count on hearing, all right. Thank you. If you don't understand exactly what the administration is asking for, vote no or defer this till January. Give the administration the opportunity to explain exactly what they are asking you to do. There is a very clear statement in the backup from two weeks ago that says there's a problem with finding paraprofessionals because they aren't paid well. So do you fix that by finding an external provider and having an MOU? No, you fix it by paying them better. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. That is all the public comment. Back to the board, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you. You know, this, this is a little bit different from any other area of MOU that I've seen. So I'd like to know what is the basic purpose of us passing a template, whereas in any other time, we're looking at an MOU or anything dealing with an MOU, it's already prepared by staff and in the board basically votes for it, up or down, or adds or subtracts anything to it, make some suggestions for revisions, especially around something like this. We, we don't know, and here's another question, around whether we're using home health agencies or colleges that were mentioned as the recent. or colleges that were mentioned as the resources for finding the staff that we're looking for. This is all still a bit cloudy and seems to still have some confusion around it. And so I'm not really comfortable approving this template. It might be a good thing, I think it probably would have worked better in a workshop situation where we're looking at not only the contents of this MOU, but perhaps others, you know, maybe revising some templates and MOUs and contracts in general in a workshop to make sure that the district is not violating any laws or civil rights in any work through any collaborations or partnerships through MOUs with the world changing as it has. So we may want to consider doing this in the near future, in early 2023. So if you can tell me what the purpose of passing a template instead of an MOU that we normally would, and whether we're looking at health agencies or colleges.
I'll try to address the answer, and I might hand off to HR if I don't go far enough. But this is akin to the board several years back approving a template for administrative contract for internal employees. The board approved the template for that contract. We utilize that contract to then contract with administrators throughout the district. It's the same concept here. It's an MOU, not a contract. MOUs are less, MOUs, the obligation of MOU is less than the obligation of a contract. It's more of an agreement to work together to accomplish a purpose. And so the board would be approving a template that HR and staff would be able to utilize with a variety of different entities to bring in individuals to fill those areas. I don't know if that explains it enough, but I can hand it off to HR maybe to provide more about specifically how it'll be used. But a template generally would be used across the board with different entities to accomplish that purpose. If the MOU is approved in a certain form, if it's changed significantly, it has to come back to the board in order for it to be approved. But if the board approves the template in a form and we use that form to its T, then we can use it in a flexible way. Hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I guess the only area that's left is, you know, what entities we're talking about, what kinds of entities, whether we're looking at these home health agencies to find the staff or the colleges.
Guys hear me? Oh, okay. So yes, the goal is to be competitive. The goal is to be the front and center of students who are leaving home health aid agencies. The problem that we're having or encountering is that we hire folks to come in, they have no idea the job that entails when it comes to being a paraprofessional, especially ESS paraprofessional. So we're having a deficit. I could hire 10 today, and by tomorrow they're gone. It's because soon as they get in, the work that they envision is not what it is. And the reason this came up, because I am a home health aid, certified home health aid in Connecticut, and I thought to myself, I know exactly what I'm going to get into once an agency call me to go in for a job. I know exactly what I'm getting into. So we were tapping into a marketplace that we had no business being into. So we need to be more intentional about what we're doing. So this is why this came up, was just to be more intentional and targeted and also to win. I'm just tired of getting the back end of the leftovers. I feel like once folks go through the program, they're trained. Once they come to EBR, we have our own internal training certification process, which we're developing with ESS and the student support specialists, right? So they're the ones that are coming together to make sure that we hire them, but we want them to be sustainable. We want them to stay with us. It's hard. The amount of money that we're paying in hiring and training and they go, we cannot recoup it. So we have to figure out a better way how to hire and retain good, talented individuals who want to do the work. In addition to that, we have a lot of child-specific powers who can't come on board, and they grow with the child. You know, just think about a child that starts from kindergarten, and by the time they read sixth grade, that child-specific power is gone, right? We have to figure out a way how to keep them on with our students along the way. So this came from a really good place of trying to make sure that we're sustainable and having some level of level footing, because it's tiresome. It's tiresome of trying to recruit, and they leave. And recruit, we're doing something wrong. So this is just something else for us to figure out. How can we maintain, retain, be attractive? Yes, we may not pay the best, but if we're being intentional about our recruitment efforts, I guarantee you that this would work. And whereas there has been no commitment to any one facility, this is just a conversation. I am really trying to do the right thing by making sure that I'm coming to the board to be transparent about whatever I'm trying to do. So I just want to make sure that this is as transparent as possible. Hopefully that answered your question without going too far down.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks.
The board is clear. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
The item is approved. We now move to G, the consent agenda. Mr. Howard.
Consent vote. The following items are to be approved as part of the consent agenda and are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a board member so requests, in which event this item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Two, naming of Tara High School softball field, the Barry Jackson Field. Consideration of a request to name the Tara High School softball field, the Barry Jackson Field. Three, grant, building Melinda Gates Foundation. Consideration of a request for the approval of the building Melinda Gates Foundation R&amp;D partnerships for the math equity grant in the amount of $3,499,026 to provide K through eighth grade research partnership with Dreambox Learning and LSU Social Research and Evaluation Center to increase student math performance in related matters. The strategic alignment is student achievement. Number four, part-time bus operator pay increase. A consideration of a request for the approval to increase the part-time bus operator rate from $10.50 per hour to $13.29 per hour to create recruitment opportunities for internal and external candidates to fill the 62 bus operator vacancies. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, and exemplary customer service. Five, transportation software RFP selection. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation of the committee for the selection of TripSpark as a provider for bus transportation software and to authorize the superintendent and general counsel to negotiate and execute a contract. The strategic alignment, operational excellence, the funding source is the general fund. Six, C-MAR selection, Broadmail Middle Site. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendations of the C-MAR selection committee of Lemoine-Luster Group to provide construction management services for the Broadmail Middle Site. The strategic alignment, operational excellence, funding source, tax plan. Seven, RFQ, architectural design consulting services, Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts. It is a consideration of a request to authorize staff to issue RFQ, I mean, excuse me, RFQ request qualifications to provide architectural design consulting services for Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts Elementary School. The strategic alignment is operational excellence, and the funding source is the tax plan. Eight, RFQ, energy management services. It is a consideration of a request authorizing staff to issue a request for qualifications to seek proposals to provide energy management consulting services. The strategic alignment is operational excellence, the funding source is tax plan phase four. Nine, professional service contracts federal. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in the following. Lexio Learning Systems LLC in the amount of $318,260 to provide professional development to improve literacy development. The strategic alignment is student achievement and employee development. The funding source is the comprehensive literacy state development grant. B, City Year in the amount of $115,000 to provide instructional support. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, SO2, Action 2. Three, Spade Strategies in the amount of $27,000 to provide exceptional student services, professional development. Strategic alignment is student achievement. The funding source is IDEA 611 and IDEA 619B. D, Associated Professional Education of Louisiana APAL in the amount of $48,000 to provide mentor training and certifications. The strategic alignment is employee development. The funding source is SO2, Action 2. Ten, professional service contract general fund. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Manship Theater in the amount of $41,206 to provide tickets and fees associated with various tour productions. The strategic alignment is student achievement. The funding source is general fund. Eleven, contract renewal, the city of Baton Rouge Adult Education EBR prison. Consideration of a request for the approval to renew a contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the city of Baton Rouge in the amount of $130, excuse me, $134,110 to allow the East Baton Rouge Parish School System Adults, Department of Adult and Continued Education, to continue providing adult education classes and high set testing for inmates at the East Baton Rouge Parish Prison from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023. The funding source is city of Baton Rouge grant. Twelve, policy JGCD-A is a consideration of a request for the approval of school war policy JGCD-A. Thirteen, litigation. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendations from Gwen Shammun, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and the matters of Renisha Sims versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and Tracy Martin, docket number 67982219JDC, East Baton Rouge Parish, Louisiana, and to provide for related matters. I so move.
So before we go any further, I do want to note to the board and to the public that the president and the vice president are now absent from the meeting. For policy, the superintendent runs the meeting in the absence of the president unless the board would choose to select a president to serve temporarily for this meeting in that spot. If there are no objections, the superintendent can run the meeting. If I, no objections? Okay. So Dr. Narcisse, since we're on the consent agenda, generally at this point you'd ask if any items, if any board members would like to pull any items from the consent agenda.
Is there any items that like to be pulled from the consent agenda? Yes, board member Lannis.
Item five.
Five. Any other items?
Yes, items six and seven.
Six and seven. Member Jackson. Any other items?
So on the consent agenda, you go to the board first for comment?
So go to the board for comment? No comment from the board? Oh, Darius, there you go. Board member Lannis? My screen doesn't click through like that, so. All right, board member Jackson?
I just wondered if Mr. Jackson was present for Tara High softball field. Just wondered if he was present. Okay, thank you.
All right, no more comment from the board. Now we'll go to the public on the consent agenda. And Dr. James Finney?
Thank you. Please confirm which items are pulled, so I save those comments.
Item five, six, and seven.
Thank you. With respect to all the items, I would hope that the three of you that will still be on the board next month would quit sending things through from the committee of the whole to the regular board meeting that are not absolutely, completely thoroughly explained and justified by the administration. The two other items that I would have wished had been pulled are number nine, the federal contracts, because eventually all the ESR money will be gone with nothing to show for it. And item number 10, subsidizing the Manship Theater. I think that's going backwards. I think if we're going to have to, from the general fund, pay for kids to go to concerts, then we probably don't need to be paying the executive director of the foundation for EBR students. And if you take that $95,000 plus benefits and take the $40,000 that you're going to use to buy tickets, you could buy the full-time professional services of two or three more art or music teachers, and I think that would be a better use of money. So I wish nine and 10 had been pulled. And going forward, I would hope the board members insist on better explanations from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. We have now Ms. Tebby Jackson.
Good evening again. I just want to talk about the money, the bus driver. It's great that it's an increase, anyone getting extra money is wonderful, because again, I've been here that long without a pay raise. But I would like, I hope that the 8% pay raise that you speak of includes everyone across the board, including the bus drivers, because we need them. It's a shortage not only here, it's a shortage in my parish, it's a shortage in almost everyone's parish. So if they can be included as well, the other sports staff, that would be wonderful, sir. Have a great evening.
All right, no other public comments. Now back to the board. No other comments from the board. Madam Secretary? Do we have the card for that? Yeah. Hold on one sec, we're just going to pull the card. Yep. Okay, hold on one second. Okay, I think we got through. There's no other, no other public comments. All right, now back to the board. No comment from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. Ms. Dyson. Ms. Dyson. The motion carries.
Okay, now to item five, G5 on the consent agenda, transportation software RFP selection. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation of the committee for the selection of TripSpark as the provider for bus transportation software and to authorize a superintendent and general counsel to negotiate and execute a contract. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, funding source, general fund. Moved by board member Bernard. Seconded by board member Dyson. Board member Lannis.
Thank you, Board President Narcisse. My question is, Ms. Baldwin in the room? Doing okay job, by the way. Yes, ma'am. Can you explain the software change while we're making this switch right now?
the software change while we're making this switch right now?
Let me call up Mr. Jordan Clements. He can explain better.
Good evening, thank you. Um, I'm Jordan Clements. I'm a Director of Procurement for the District. Yes, so, uh, this RFP was issued back in June of twenty, of this past year. So, uh, the reason for the change is the software that was being utilized has been utilized for fifteen to twenty years, fifteen plus years, so, uh, the District decided, and Transportation Department decided to see what was out there, to see if there was, um, what options were available to the District that could enhance our, our software.
Okay, I guess my question is, um, what makes this software better than the one we're currently using?
So the current software is antiquated. The routing system is, does not have the correct streets that are currently within the system, wi- within the city, um, and the, um, the, um, software that the parents use, VO now will be upgraded as well, so parents will be able to follow their students directly, um, without the Transportation Department having to enter those changes, because we'll have 5G and we'll have, um, RFID, um, that will track the students. And so it's just better software. The other software is older, it's antiquated, it doesn't, um, it's not as accurate. It doesn't allow the department to have as many efficiencies, and so the current software is just going to serve the department better.
So we use this software for fifteen years? It's antiquated system?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So this is a much-needed upgrade and change?
Much needed.
Okay, I can appreciate that, especially the fact that we can now track students, which helps us in terms of liability, but it also gives the parents their sense of, uh, security that their child is safe while they're on the bus, and I can appreciate that. My last question would be, uh, does this make the job easier for our current bus drivers that we have?
It will definitely be more accurate and more timely and more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Goday?
Uh, thank you, Superintendent Narcisse. I just also wanted to point out, because we went into a pretty deep discussion of this at the Committee of the Whole. This software will also, uh, tie into the current, uh, software we're implementing on HR and finance and procurement and things like that, so they will be interfaces that will go from this software to the other. So while it's not totally integrated into it, it does have the capability to pass information back and forth between those, so, uh, I think this is a much-needed upgrade, something we should have done years ago, but quite honestly, because we're upgrading all of our other systems, this is a perfect time to do it. So thank you very much.
Board Member Jackson?
Uh, does the software have any effect on the, uh, transfer system or the, the, the transfer routes and the, the timing of, uh, getting kids from home to school in a hopefully positive manner?
So as the routing will be more accurate, there will be more efficiencies and timelines to create the routes, and the goal of the Transportation Department next year is to move forward with removing the remainder of elementary transfer students there. But, um, the efficiencies are, are part of the routing system.
Thank you.
Okay, um, no more comments from the board. Back to the public. Dr. James Finney?
Thank you. An upgrade in software is certainly necessary because it will remove an excuse that the system has had for not having an efficient transportation system. However, it's not sufficient. So what needs to come with this software is a commitment from the administration to try to offer every student at every school, every day, the opportunity for a safe, direct bus ride to their school. So I would hope the people power follows the software and that there's a commitment from the administration and the board to encourage bus ridership rather than actively discouraging it like they did before this school year. Thank you.
Karonda Corley?
Good afternoon, Karonda Corley, Corinth Corley, parent and self, the child is a self-advocate in training. Um, this, I, I'm speaking for this, y'all know, I don't, I, I don't normally speak for something. So see, Board Member Lanis, y'all gotta be appreciative of this. I actually like this software. Um, I've had the opportunity to see it in action, and it is something that is very much needed today. I, I've actually, I actually saw, um, the bo- the bus drivers do an amazing job, and this this software actually helps them, because it allows transportation to be able to see if a bus is late. Where exactly is that bus? How long it would take that bus to arrive at the school destination? So give an example like, uh, traffic. Traffic is hectic trying to get to this building, but let's say we had the students on the bus, and we needed to, they were supposed to be here thirty minutes ago and they're not here. We could actually let the families know, hey, they're, uh, they're stuck on College Drive, and they'll be here in about ten minutes. It, it, it is just that specific, where it can show you their exact location, it lets you know, um, if stops are being passed up and what stops are the actual stops for the students, so. I do think that this is a program that we should use, that we should keep, and I do think that we should actually try to find a way to have some type of software or programming to actually be able to communicate with every system throughout our school system. So that, so like, for example, this software could act, if a bus is gonna be late, it can let child welfare know that, hey, all those kids that are assigned to that bus will be late, so do not give them a tardy, that is an excuse lateness due to whatever, um, is going on with transportation, et cetera. And I think that this will be beneficial, because it would prevent our families from going into truancy. Um, as you know, truancy is something that is impacting our students all the time, and it also is an unnecessary expense on the families. So I, I just really and truly think that we will be getting our money's worth by actually having the software and having this software be able to communicate with other departments so that we can actually prevent unnecessary expenses on the families and prevent litigation. And of course, I'll be back on litigation in thirty-three seconds. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Uh, no other, uh, public comments. Now back to the board. No comments from the board. Uh, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Uh, item G six, uh, C Mar Selection Broadmoor Middle Site. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Recommendation of the C Mar Selection Committee of Lemoine Luster Group to provide construction management services for the Broadmoor Middles- Middle Site, Broadmoor Conservatory. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence, Funding Source, Tax Plan. Uh, Board Member Lanis? Second, Board Member Baloo? Comments from the board? Board Member Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. A couple of questions, just for, uh, public clarity around this, uh, school. Uh, this is the, um, Arts Conservatory, and the grade configuration is six twelve, right? Yes?
That is correct.
And, um, what is the, the budget for completion and according to the, uh, tax plan? And what are the plans to help supplement, um, the budget to produce a school, the, an arts, a quality arts, um, conservatory with consideration of the effects of inflation?
Uh, if we can get, uh, Ms. Judith Anderson. Ms. Randy Morales, please come on up.
To, uh, answer your question about the budget, we are just under ten million for the construction budget for the renovation. Um, in terms of the steps that we're taking to address budget, you're gonna?
So we're meeting in-house tomorrow to talk about budgetary, talk about, uh, program for the building, what is needed, um, what is gonna need to be done. Uh, the Seymour selection process is, is to pick the construction manager at risk for this, so that they can help us work through this design phase to say, hey, okay, what work needs to be done to the building? How much money do you have? Um, what is the price that it looks like to do this kind of stuff? Um, which is also why we're meeting in-house tomorrow again to talk about curriculum, um, because the conservatory is a bit different than a normal K-12 school, you know, it's not just classrooms, it's dance rooms, it's, um, theaters, that kind of stuff, so. Uh, we're trying to figure out with the money we have, what can be done and what needs to be done to even move us into that building to start with. Uh, we're also investigating, uh, other outside sources of, of funding to see what might be available. Um, is there maybe partnerships or something that we can do, uh, if there's additional monies needed?
So that's part of your conversation in some upcoming meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wondered if there were any ideas on tap at the moment, but from what you're saying, there, there are, there are none, we're, that's for the future. Okay, thank you.
Board Member Dyson?
Yes, I just wanted to get clarity, um, for the viewing audience, um, and the public. So this is in addition to the architect, this is not in, in place of the, we've already chosen the ar- architect, and they're gonna be involved in these discussions as well, it's, so it will be a joint effort, correct? Thank you so much.
No other comments from the board. Uh, now to the public, Dr. James Finney?
Having a dedicated arts high school four blocks from a high school that already has a strong arts program is a really bad idea. Spending ten or eleven million without a plan for the program and no master plan for si- for facilities is also a really bad idea. You're off schedule in every other component of the tax plan. Nothing will be lost if you defer this for one month and hear from the new board, so I would strongly encourage you to defer this item for at least one full month. Thank you.
No other comments from the public. Now back to the board. No comments from the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Item G seven, um, RFQ Architectural Design Consulting Services, Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts. Consideration of a Request to Authorize Staff to Issue an RFQ Request for Qualifications to Provide Architectural Design Consulting Services for Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts Elementary School. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence, Funding Source, Tax Plan. Um, Ms. Bernard? Second, uh, Board Member Jackson? Comment from the board? Board Member Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Narcisse. People, the public is so excited about, about this project, about, uh, Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts, and at the same time, they have a lot of questions around how the, um, that re-imagine proposal affects the, um, the future of, um, Baton Rouge Center, uh, especially, uh, with regard to the timelines and the, um, information around the re-imagine says one thing, and the tax plan for, um, BRCBPA is for an, uh, elementary school. So, um, I would like some clarity for the public's sake and the board as well around the, um, the, the different things that we heard from the Committee of the Whole as far as grade configuration and, uh, information that I received earlier today of, around the, uh, re-imagine proposal and timelines on that, and, um, also, you know, whether we have, we, we have the foresight for the, the teachers that are going to be needed with the teach- teacher shortage, especially arts teachers. I know some of them are reassigned to, uh, different, um, different jobs instead of, uh, their usual arts, um, teaching. So can we address this? Can we make this clear to the public, especially for this, the, uh, parents at, uh, Baton Rouge Center and at Flame? And of course, they're, they're also wanting to know uh, how the parents and teachers will be incorporated into any plans, especially if we're looking at doing something new and different that is not in the tax plan that, uh, that we voted on.
Uh, if I can get, um, Ms. Spalding and Ms. Smith, if you can come up. If you can clarify for, for Member Jackson, just the, what the, uh, expansion will be at BRCBPA?
Yes. Uh, good evening, board members. So, um, earlier today, we received an email from, um, Board Member Jackson and some other community members, and the question that was posed in that email was pertaining to a statement that was made at the Cow about the modification to the grant application for both BRCPA as well as Baton Rouge Flame. And we were able to confirm from Ms. Jackson and the community member that we submitted an amendment to, for the grant application to the state to change our request to expand the number of grade levels and only to increase the number of seats at grade levels, grade levels pre-K through three at each one of the schools, and that was approved by the state on November sixteenth. So that is the, that is the clarification that was requested earlier today.
How, how about the, um, inclusion of, uh, parents and/or teachers in any of the, the planning for expansion, and even if we expand wide, which is a wonderful thing, because that is what people are, were asking for, uh, initially when we first started talking about re-imagine was that the, uh, there's such a demand for the, the present seats there. Even in an expansion that way, where will the funding come from with regard to what's in the budget and the tax plan and what we're looking at with regard to inflation with the, uh, rising costs and then adding more seats? Is there a plan for, uh, supplementing that budget when it comes down to, um, the expansion of more classrooms at BRCBPA and at Flame?
Well, as you may recall, um, with the presentation from the consultants from LDOE, they explained to this board that there are two phases to the re-imagine grant. The first place is a, is a planning phase, and that's the phase that we're currently in. And then there's a second phase that comes with additional funding, and that's the implementation phase. So the purpose of the grant would be to give us additional funding to support those efforts and those, those, um, those priorities that we have defined in our grant application. So that's where the additional funding would come for, from. I also have Dr. Bethley here, who out has been working and managing the ARM project, and any fiscal matters that you want to address specifically, um, Dr. Bethley will be happy to address.
Yes, from what I understand, the, from what I understand-
Board Mayor Jackson, you're out of time.
Well, thank you.
So, um, any, uh, any, any, uh, staff, would you did have something one more that you wanted to clarify for the board?
I was, I'm on the queue now, and I'll-
Yep, Board Member Goday, yes, please clarify.
So I'm inviting, um, Judith Anderson from CS Horace Tillage, who's our program manager, she can speak to your questions that you were asking for, Member Jackson, related to supporting the staff and parents, um, related to, um, the design build, please.
Yes, we will, um, we can absolutely do some community engagement with the faculty, staff, community, parents, and even the students, um, with the architects that are selected. Uh, we could have workshops where we basically hold design charits, where we can gain from them what's important for the school and how it functions and operates, and just to have some involvement, um, so that they feel that they have, um, some input- to have some involvement so that they feel that they have some input into what the outcome will be, as what it looks like and what's there. So we can absolutely do that.
Thank you. That's very important. They'll be looking for that.
Thank you. All right. No more comments from the board. Now we go to the public. Dr. James Finney.
Thank you. Anybody who was not fortunate enough to get a seat at that school and lives in the neighborhood and has the misfortune of driving down Acadian Thruway in the afternoon might take issue with the concept that you're going to put more students on that campus. That sounds like a really bad idea. And I would, with this item, encourage deferring it for a month to let the new board weigh in on whether it makes sense to stack all the magnet kids within two miles of each other, right down the road from Acadian Thruway to College Drive, as opposed to putting some other magnets sprinkled around the school district. I'm sure Ms. Dyson may have an opinion on that. So I would strongly encourage you to defer this. Rebuild the school, sure. I mean, if you want to do an RFQ, but I would hope that the administration doesn't take that as assuming that this train can't be turned around and put on the right course because putting more students on a campus that you already don't allow students to walk to and you don't have a traffic plan for is a really bad idea and a disservice to that neighborhood. So please defer this item. Thank you.
Stephanie James?
Hello, Stephanie James. I serve as the PTO president at BRCBPA. We are elated that this is coming to fruition. It's been a long time coming. But we just wanted to come on behalf of the students, parents, and teachers to say that we want to make sure that there's transparency and collaboration in the plans that go forward. And then also that I know that this is only our RFQ to select an architect or what have you, but we want to come on the forefront to also say that there's no way that you can kind of plan for the infrastructure improvements that are going to happen, happen, without also having some type of plan of what's going to happen with the re-imagine grant. So far, and I did hear the representatives say that they will do, you know, community meetings and charrettes and things like that, but to date, none of that has happened with parents, and that is a little disheartening. So we do want to say here publicly that we do expect, again, transparency and collaboration in the path forward. Thank you.
Karonda Corley?
Karonda Corley, Corinne Corley, parent, self-advocate, right here. Okay. So this contract for the agriculture design. I do believe that we need to choose a company that is going to make sure that we build a school that is in American Disability Act compliance. And so when I make the recommendation, my recommendation would be that you would actually consult with some national people that deal with individuals with disabilities. Currently, we have too many buildings that are not in ADA compliance, which makes it extremely hard for children and staff alike that have disabilities. I know I use our... I use this room a lot because it's newly renovated, but I'm going to use another building that we spent a lot of money to build, and that is Broadmoor Elementary. We used to the tune of $30 million to build a school that is not in ADA compliance. Let me give you an example. When you go to a hospital or to a doctor's office or to the mall, to state buildings, you can press a button that actually makes the door open. You don't have that at Broadmoor Elementary. Yet Broadmoor Elementary has classrooms for children with autism, children with developmental disabilities, children... Well, they don't have severe profile. Y'all bust them to Jefferson Terrace, but that's a different story. But it's not in ADA compliance. And that's problematic because now you have children that have orthopedic impairments, wheelchairs, et cetera, that cannot matriculate into the building safely. Now, I'm not sure if any one of you have spoken with any attorneys besides Mr. Shamlin because I know Mr. Shamlin can tell y'all as well. But when it comes to ADA, we don't have to sue the board. Collectively, we can sue the board members individually behind ADA. ADA does allow us to sue for things that does not comply with our children's IEP or don't necessarily have anything to do with education that falls under Title II. So I do think that we need to be very prudent about what company or what entity we do choose to make sure that it is equitable and equally able to be accessed by our individuals, whether they are abled or disabled. And that would allow us to actually be in compliance with making sure every student every day can have access to appropriate education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. No additional comments from the public. Now back to the board. Board Member Jackson?
Couple more questions around the... I know we don't have our district-wide plan, so we don't know exactly what the demographics says for needs. But we do know that there is a demand, always a demand, at BRCBPA and at Flame. However, from what I understand, the re-imagine funds can't be used for capital projects, can't be used for construction. So we'll need to keep that in mind. And also around... Let me see. What's the question around? The temporary location. There have been questions around whether students will need to be located at a temporary site during the construction of BRCBPA. Flame has no problem because everything is already on-site for that expansion. But what about that question around the location for those students at BRCBPA? Do we have a temporary, a swing space? Will they need to be moved to a swing space?
Ms. Scott Spalding? Questions concerning swing space for BRCBPA?
Yes, sir. We've looked at several sites. I have Mr. Randy Morales here, Chief of Physical Plant Services, and he can speak to you about the current location in consideration.
So we've looked at a couple of locations. We're trying to do site assessments. We've looked at EBR readiness. We've looked at Kendallworth, trying to see what buildings we have available and what kind of condition they are, and also get a cost analysis to figure out what is it going to cost the district to occupy those buildings?
Well, I'm sure that they do appreciate that information. And I'm sure you'll have more in the meetings that are coming up in January or in February at both of those schools. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
No other comment from the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Item H, New Business Superintendent's Evaluation. Discussion Regarding the Results of the Superintendent's Performance Evaluation for 2022.
Superintendent has requested that his evaluation occur in executive session per policy of the board, requires a two-thirds vote, first a motion for a second and a two-thirds vote.
I move.
You move?
Yeah.
Moved by Ms. Bernard, seconded by Ms. Dyson, and a two-thirds vote of those members present is four. So we'll let Ms... I'm sorry. We'll allow the board to comment first, go to the audience, and back to the board.
No comment from the board. Now to comment to the public. Dr. James Finney.
Thank you. I think an executive session would be most unfortunate. And as the chief executive of a large employer that touches every part of the community, I think it would be entirely appropriate for the public to hear what the board members think of your performance. So I would encourage several of you to vote against the idea of doing this in executive session. Thank you.
No other comments from the public. Now back to the board. No other comments from the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
We'll convene to executive session and return after. We'll convene to executive session and return after.[101.53]
Okay, we will resume. We will now move to item H2, Capitol High School Resolution. Consideration of a request for the approval of resolution authorizing the superintendent and general counsel, subject to further legal review, to take all necessary actions to establish a Louisiana nonprofit organization for the benefit of Capitol High School. Have a motion? Board member Lanis, second by board member Goday. Public comments from the board?
I have a question Superintendent. I think it's really important that the appointments for the board be made by the superintendent and, you know, to just make it as neutral as possible. And so I would wonder if the maker and the second would accept that as a friendly, that the board or council for this school be appointed by the superintendent? Just to kind of remove it from any sort of, I don't know, influence of any kind. Thanks so much. That's great.
Make sure for the language.
Do you have some language for the board?
Yes, and you called me board member Shamlin.
I mean, sorry, councilman Sham, general counsel Sham.
Not close. Give me just a second, I'll make a recommendation.
So it's a friendly amendment to allow the superintendent to appoint the nonprofit board for Capitol High School is the addition of the language?
Yeah, so the item would read, Ms. Armon would read, consideration of a request for the approval of a resolution authorizing the superintendent and general counsel, subject to further legal review, to take all necessary actions to establish a Louisiana nonprofit organization for the benefit of Capitol High School and to authorize the superintendent to appoint board members for that nonprofit.
To appoint members of that board?
Members of the board.
In accordance with state law, so that there's no conflict of interest in that if they would have to do any sort of ethics training or, you know, what I'm saying, Mr. Shamlin? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Armon, do you have that?
To appoint members of that board in accordance with state law. Or in compliance with state law.
So, do we have the language correct for that?
Yes.
All right, you want us to read it again? Ms. Armon?
A friendly amendment to consider the request for the approval of a resolution authorizing the superintendent and general counsel, subject to further legal review, to take all necessary actions to establish a Louisiana nonprofit organization for the benefit of Capitol High School and to authorize the superintendent to appoint members of that board in compliance with state law.
Is that acceptable, friendly amendment? Okay, all right. We'll have comments from the board. Board member Baloo. Board member Jackson?
Can you give us a little background on the purpose of the resolution, since this is something that we've not done before? And, you know, in bringing Capitol High back, we're excited about bringing Capitol High back and we'd like to know a little bit more about the resolution, you know, why we want to do this.
Yes, board member Jackson. Counsel Shamlin?
Yes ma'am. So the members of the board, special counsel Dennis Blunt, who's here tonight, he'll come up, but I'll start by saying that superintendent challenged counsel to look at options to address the Capitol High facility needs. As you know, Betsy voted to return the school to the district and we are working out the stipulations in terms of that final return, but the facility needs are still out there and still a requirement for us to address. One of the ways we do that is looking at the creation of a nonprofit, to look at potential funding opportunities related to that facility. I'll let special counsel Blunt take us into any specific details because he's been kind of assigned this project to handle under my office, so I'll turn it over to him to give us a little further information.
Thank you, Mr. Shamlin, superintendent slash board president Narcisse, members of the board. This is an interesting project. I think there are several layers to working through how we handle both financing and management of Capitol as it returns to the district. I think there are plenty of models out there that allow a whole lot of flexibility in order to accelerate the process by which you, as best I can say it, build the plane while you're flying it, because it is going to take a considerable amount of rehab for a facility that has not had, you know, the sort of upkeep that is required and sort of consistent with what you have done with another school, another high school that you had returned to you. There are challenges, challenges to meet. The structure of this will be, could be the same, could be different. Embedded in the resolution is the opportunity to go either one of four different directions. And the nonprofit organization that we intend to create will give you maximum flexibility for, A, quickly rehabbing the facility based upon a finance structure that allows quicker financing than something through the tax plan, or if there is opportunity to continue with tax plan financing of the rehab of the facility, that opportunity is there as well. But I think the long and short of where this goes is you'll have the opportunity to have either a wholly owned entity that EBR owns and operates, that operates and handles the construction separately of the facility, or you'll have an entity sort of like the EBR Foundation that is an entity related that you enter into an MOU with that actually will handle the development, management, and operation of the school pursuant to an agreement with EBR. The long and short of it is either one will be an entity that is EBR operating, managing, and handling the financing of the school. This structure just allows additional flexibility to have it financed more quickly.
Board member Jackson?
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure that the Capitol, the people in the Capitol area and all over the district will be happy to hear about that.
There are challenges, but I genuinely believe we can meet them.
That much detail is very important, you know, because there's really nothing here that's telling us anything, you know, except that they would be looking at managing and operating, but when you start talking about the nitty gritty, you know, we're looking at how we are going to improve that school campus, you know, that's a big piece that's on everybody's mind.
This structure, I don't think would be necess, is really necessitated by the financing challenge, and absent the financing challenge, I don't think you would have to go through some of these hoops. But this structure as proposed will, I think, give the flexibility to the board and as the resolution, should you authorize it, as it outlines, you will have the belts and suspenders of knowing that prior to, you know, EBR engaging in the process, we will have all necessary, you know, state regulatory, legal sign-offs. It'll, so you won't have to worry about the notion of having engaged in something and then finding out that you've gone left and should have gone right. So that's embedded within the resolution as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Lanis?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, well attorney Dennis Blunt, I haven't seen you in a few years. But no, seriously, I like this idea for two primary reasons. One, the money side. The district doesn't lose any dollars, those dollars flow and go, come right back into our district, on top of the ability to enhance what's currently already happening on the campus. And two, given the complexity of what Capitol has dealt with in the past, this school needs the autonomy to be able to grow in their own space and it has to be innovative. So I think that this is a good move. I think you did an amazing job helping us with this process and I just want to commend you, Mr. Superintendent, for the idea. Thank you.
If I could add one thing that I should have mentioned before I made a single comment with regard to Capitol, I would like for the three board members who are here remaining that will not be carrying forward into 2023, I have, it has been a pleasure to serve you and I thank you for your service to this community.
Board member Dyson?
Yes, I just would really like us to be very careful going forward. I would like for us to remember that we have to keep in mind our facility master plan. That plan is going to hopefully right away in the first quarter help us with some efficiencies across the district. Also, we've got great need there and we've done it once and we took all the money that we used to call the summer project money and used it all for one project. And so there were a lot of, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that occurred because of that and things, unexpected things that come up with parking lots or different things that come up throughout this process and then throughout our tax plan. We just really have to be very careful because there, as I've always said, there is always both a Peter and a Paul and we just, we can't neglect deferred maintenance any longer. And so we need those dollars that are, because we always budget high on projects and things for the tax plan and allow for some extra dollars that help us with that deferred maintenance and we've not done that as of late and we, I strongly believe we've got to get back doing that at the very least. Thank you.
Board member Howard?
Thank you, President Superintendent Narcisse. So I think for me, I, first of all, like this has been a long awaited process. Since my very first meeting on the school board, we've been talking about Capitol High School, so to be in my final meeting and to finally see some like continuous resolve with the school, I think it's to applaud all of the people who've put these things into place. I think my question or just, you know, point of clarity is like while Dr. Narcisse, I know that you understand the benefit of bringing Capitol back to our district and I think that you get the idea of the importance of this school to the, to the community. The language of the resolution allows for the superintendent to have a lot of discretionary power. So today, it's great, you're here, you understand. In the future, if something was to happen and there was another superintendent who may not be so great or not, you know, have the understanding of the school, I would just caution the remaining board members to take a look at what that means for the school, because I think about some boards now in the community that are led by governors and individuals and as the governors and leadership change, it's always like a pause to see what could be the difference or what could be the shift. And so, you know, as you guys consider that, I would just love to know some clarity around like how it becomes a superintendent's decision and not a board decision to decide the board, etc. If you can just provide clarity on, that would be helpful for me and also for the, I guess, remaining board. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Howard. So the goal that I have specifically for this is to, as soon if the board accepts that I appoint, I will, my goal is to move in creating that, that board to help with the governance structure of the school. And a part of that governance structure that's important for me is that not only that it includes industry partners, but also community-based folks from that community to be a part of that, as well as part of EBR staff and other entities where they are able to make decisions on the structure and governance of that school as they would support the school leaders, staff, and those pieces. So that is where the appointment would be for there.
No, I 100% understand the appointment process and what the structure that those folks will have. I would just caution the remaining board members to take, to keep a heavy eye. If there is a shift in leadership on what that could potentially mean for the board remaining in, as they, if this is the model that we go with, that that board would still exist way past you and Capitol High School would still be here way past you. And so having that at least nugget in your mind to know that like there could be something that you want to amend to this resolution to ensure that the quality and the sustainability of the school lasts past the superintendent is what my concern is. So thank you guys for that.
Thank you, board member Howard. Thank you, attorney Blunt. Now to the public comments to the audience, we will go to Dr. Tony Jones.
I am a 77, 1977 graduate and I've seen the school at its high level, at its best, and I've seen it appear to be a restroom where paid and polit, paid as well as elected politicians go to relieve themselves. I am grateful for Betsy, I'm grateful to this board that you saw the garden that it used to be, that you're choosing to sow seeds and to grow something better. So I represent United Faith Leaders, group of 231 entities of ministries, ministers, pastors, CEOs, and I sent letters out to them, I sent a letter out to you all today. I implore you, keep doing what you're doing. There's a garden there, all it needs is the seeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Karonda Corley? All right, we'll go to the next.
Sometimes your self-advocate decides that they don't feel like advocating, so, you know, you gotta kind of respect their wishes at times. But Capitol High School, I am so happy, especially after speaking with my city council member, Mr. Dunn, about all of the things that they worked out as it relates to this resolution. I am extremely happy that Capitol High is coming back and I can't say enough about Capitol High and how much it means to the staff and to that community. Now, what I would hope that y'all would consider is on that steering committee, if you can gladly add me, because you're gonna need somebody that know about disabilities and all that disability law, and I can definitely help y'all out in that area. But I do hope that y'all really and truly work hard to make sure that Capitol High allow the students to go back to being able to do internships at Louisiana Workforce Commission. That was something that actually helped a lot of the students there and it actually gave them meaningful employment after they graduated from high school. So I think that that's something that we really should look at, not just for Capitol High, but for all of our high schools, with actually doing a partnership with city council and with other state agencies to allow them to actually be able to do that. I know Department of Transportation actually offers that program, I could definitely make you, give you that connection later, but Capitol High should definitely return and I really hope that y'all make it your, make it a really great Christmas gift to make sure that all of the neighborhood kids can return to that. And I know that we're doing the sustainable community school model, I think that if we allow the kids from Capitol Elementary go to Capitol Middle and be able to go to Capitol High School, as well as allow the children from Park Elementary be able to go to Capitol High School, I think that that would be the greatest thing in the world because that would be a real, true, sustainable community school model. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr., thank you, Ms. Corley. Dr. James Finney?
The return of Capitol High to local control as a directly run local school is an excellent idea. The assumption that you have to do something special and weird and quite possibly illegal is a really bad idea. No matter how badly Dr. Narcisse wants some private company to come in and bulldoze the site, Red Apple Realty being likely in that conversation, and for you to forever owe them several million dollars a year in rent, no matter how badly he wants that to happen, no matter how much he wants exclusive control to appoint an entire board and take your power away from you, doesn't mean it's a good idea. Let me be clear, Capitol High coming back to the local control is great, but it didn't work when 100 black men had it as their own special project 20 years ago or however long that was. It apparently didn't work with all the attempts the state did to do something that was other than a local school board running it with employees of the local school board. I hate to say this out loud, but I have to agree with Woody Jenkins. He was very eloquent when he said that the board did a great thing when you accepted Estruma back from the state. It was a mess, you spent a lot of money, and you didn't need to create a ridiculous nonprofit to try to do stuff under the radar. Everything was done in a fully public, proper meeting. The people of Capitol High, please don't disrespect them so much that you force them to take a bad deal as the only way they deserve to have their own school back. They deserve to have a real public school just like any other neighborhood. There is nothing defective about that neighborhood that says the only way we can make this work is if we give all the control to the superintendent, let him pick a people, a handful of people that would agree with whatever he wants to do. And for the love of all things holy, if you're leaving this board in another hour, do not support this and stick your successors with a really bad idea. Defer this till January, defer this till June. I don't see a real problem with letting the Capitol Education Foundation or whatever that current organization is called operate it for another year under the same sort of arrangement they have with the state. I don't have the impression they're doing a horrible job. Please do not pass this bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Barbara King?
My name is Barbara King and I'm with United Faith Leaders here representing all of my fellow workers. I am not a graduate of Capitol High, but I have siblings and family members that are, I'm a graduate of Badmer High. So I do appreciate all the consideration that is going into bringing this school back and I do support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Ms. Shakita Tatum Brown?
I'm Shakita Tatum Brown and I am in support of the resolution for a nonprofit organization to aid and support and bring Capitol back. I think it is needed and it gives the community a voice in the process, but I hope and pray you do not treat Capitol the way you did Estruma High School. The district will tell you, there's nothing they can do because Estruma is not under the tax plan. Well, the last time I looked, Capitol is not under the tax plan either. It's like Robin Peter to PayPal. Estruma has an auditorium that has not been renovated after six years, they have major leaks and the buildings on the campus have mildew and other projects that are not finished. I'm talking about things I've seen with my own eyes. When Estruma reopened six years ago, they started with this place. they started with displaced teachers, which are horrible, and they are still there. Estruma has an advisory board that's filled with political figures who seems like they are only worried about their name on the plaque that EBR put on the wall. My daughter went to Estruma for three years, and I couldn't take it anymore. So I took my daughter out of that school. Dr. Narcisse, I know that this had, this didn't happen under you, but I want you to think about, and please be smart, and about Capital and do your homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Jack Harrell?
Hello, my name is Jack Harrell. I'm a nineteen-eighty-one graduate of Capital High School, and I'm a nineteen-seventy-seven graduate of Park Elementary. I'm, I'm fully for the focus program, and I support the resolution. And what I didn't hear, I heard a couple of people before me say the word "steering committee." It's my understanding that this resolution is tied to possibly creating a steering committee. I could be wrong, but that's what I'm thinking. And I know that the, the council came up here and he spoke on the situation financially because of the pluses that that would hit, that, that the steering committee would provide with that. Well, my emphasis on a steering committee is on the academic side. To me, that's the strength, that's to me, my strength of the steering committee. So whatever members get, get picked, we know that Capital's scores are slowly coming up, and I do believe that if we put more emphasis on the academic side of the steering committee, that that's really what it's about. And to one of the speakers before, the Capital people, we, we can speak for ourselves. We don't have nothing ran down our throat. And I support you one-hundred percent, Dr. Narcisse, and, and I support everybody up here, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Dr. Olafonda Hurd?
Good evening. I am Dr. Olafonda Hurd, founder of On the Move for Christ Faith Ministry and a United Faith Leader. Y'all know that this is near and dear to my heart, because I too lost my high school. So I just wanted to say that I am in support. I thank you so much, Dr. Narcisse, for the proposal. I think the nonprofit is a great idea. I know everybody's trying to shut it down, but, and I heard somebody say something to the effect of it being under, not being under the microscope, but if you know anything about nonprofits, and because I have one myself, we are very much under the microscope when it comes to financing, okay? So it's nothing that he's gonna be able to pull the rug over your eyes with, with a nonprofit organization. Let me just make that clear, having a nonprofit organization of my own, okay? Thank y'all so much for your time, and I pray that as we have sown this seed, that we can continue to water it until it grows to fruition. Y'all be blessed.
Our last card I want to, we have Councilman Cleve Dunnett's here, who is a, I know, a Capital alumni as well. Councilman, thank you for coming to our board meeting.
Good evening. I'm actually here in my capacity as the Capital High School Alumni Association President, and I firmly support this resolution. What I heard Attorney Blunt say, and what has been presented to us, is this resolution gives us options on financing, options to appoint a board to oversee the operations of the school, the curriculum, and things of that nature. Not once did I hear anyone present or say that a decision will be made on X, Y, or Z. What I like about this, it gives us options. Many of us have been advocating for the return of Capital for quite some time, board members, members of the community, Bessie Board members, and individuals that live in and around the school. And we've been in a situation, if you speak about the tax and deferred maintenance and things of that nature, a back and forth between our local district and the state of who's been responsible for, for this upkeep. And the facility is in a bad si- in a bad place. And we need options. We need all the options possible because of the challenges that we've had. I receive and listen to all that has been presented here tonight at Bessie in the public, and we take all those things under consideration. We don't really take anything off the table right now. We wanted to evaluate, scrutinize, and look at all options that we can bring our school back and return it back to glory. We want to thank Dr. Narcisse for coming to the Alumni Association meetings, making a commitment to our community, making a commitment to our alumni that he will return to school, and most importantly, having us and the community be a part of the conversation. When the plan was originally presented to us, it was presented one way. But due to feedback from the, the CEF folks, Bessie, EBR members, and the community, the plan evolved. And we want to ask you to continue that spirit of keeping all stakeholders involved, considering all information, and let's do this together, because this has truly been a, a team effort. Community, board, state, and local, and the leadership of our superintendent, Dr. Narcisse. Want to thank all of you board members. I know Woody was here speaking about you guys and this board returning Estruma High School. Well, hey, you returned another high school as well, back to the local district, and we thank all of you for that. Thank you.
Board, I just want to, I noticed that the CEO of Baton Rouge General Hospital is here, Mr. Elgardo Tenero. I know that he's been heavily involved as well, and he also sits on the Park Elementary Board, which has made one of the biggest progress come back in the state of Louisiana. So, Mr. Harrell, thank you for coming. Yes?
Dr. Narcisse and the, and the board for supporting this project. This is a, a dream that I've had for, for many years, in trying to figure out how we can connect the Mid-City Hospital and all the work that is happening on Florida with Acadian to, you know, to Park Elementary and to Capital, and then connect that from a development perspective, when a community development perspective with what's happening on Plank Road. On the other side of Acadian, we have a lot of facilities from Baton Rouge Community College. We have a nursing school. We also have a, a radiology tech school, and, and we need a pipeline of, of, of workers for the future of healthcare. So I believe that this is gonna be a beacon of hope and, and development opportunity for all the folks who live in Mid-City, who live in North Baton Rouge, and so who live in this surrounding area. Like it was said before, it is, we're building a plane while we're flying. It is not going to be perfect, but what we're attempting to do here now is, is build the, the framework, the infrastructure of that plane, so that as the opportunities come forward, we're able to take advantage of them. So we're fully in support of this. I've had, earlier today, we had a couple of staff members that are helping me with that. Unfortunately, they had to leave, but if I could, you know, share with you the enthusiasm of the staff of Baton Rouge General in wanting to partner with Park and with Capital to develop, in essence, a, a new model of how we're gonna partner with, with industry to make sure that these kids have an opportunity for their future as they, as they mature. Another component that I want to mention is that we're not gonna stop with, with just the high school and, and the elementary school in partnership with the general, but I also want to attack what's happening between ages zero and four, also in that community, and really make that as, as a potential medical home for the students, for the families, and, and for the, for the teachers. So I'm super excited about this. Again, a dream that is coming true, and I appreciate your support and Dr. Narcisse's support for this, for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. No other comments from the public? Back to the board. Board Member Goode.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Narcisse. I just wanted to highlight, Mr. Tenero, I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly, but I also want just to highlight the fact that the outstanding job that was done at Park Elementary, just, you know, I'm an engineer, I always look at numbers, but Park Elementary in 2019 had a forty-nine-point-eight SPS. In 2021, they had a simulated SPS score of forty-six-point-three. And in the first year of that, now, had a sixty-one-point-one, so they went from an, an F to a C. And what I also understand is the enrollment in that school is up by, I think, sixty-plus students. So I just wanted to thank you for the efforts that you've done into that, and this model can work and be a success. And I, I just want to, you know, we don't celebrate successes enough around here, but that, that is a wonderful success. And I expect them to be a B next year.
You know, I, I can't take credit for that. I can tell you that my staff has been very enthusiastic in partnering, but it really, in terms of Park, it's the staff and the principal there have been so excited about the partnership. So it, it's just a team effort, and, and I think when you go and visit Park, you, you feel that energy. I want to say one more thing. There is a, there, there is a garden already at, at the Capitol. It's full of seeds, and they have been planted, and they're growing. And in fact, I took some, I went to visit and I got vegetables there the other day. So it, it's coming, and I think that, that we will see similar improvement in Capital as all of this comes together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also just wanted to add that in my conversations with the principal of Park Elementary, how I want to shout out to their staff, the, the EBR staff, those teachers over there, and the great job that they're doing. And there were plenty of people that said, oh, when we do this, the staff isn't gonna like it and do this. Our principal, the principal there was telling me, she was having to tell staff to go home, because they were so excited about what they were getting and what they were doing over there. So just a shout out to the principal, and I admit I'm old, I cannot remember her name, but.
Miss Tate.
Miss Tate. My apologies, Miss, no offense meant, Miss Tate, but to you and to all of your faculty and staff at Park for the great job that they're doing, and I want to see that repeated at Capital. Thank you.
Board Member Jackson?
Thank you, Superintendent Narcisse. I'm, I'm wondering about the, the makeup of the board. You know, as far as, I think what, what Ms. Bernard did was change some wording in that you would be choosing the members of the board. So I'd like to know what kind of makeup are you looking for? You know, I'm particularly interested in the community piece being involved in, in that board. Do you have certain ideas about what kind of, kinds of positions that, that you'd be looking to implement there?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question, Board Member Jackson. Similar to what we've done with Park, we would have the industry partner, as you can see, the CEO of Baton Rouge General, the, also, community members. As you notice, we have our Capital alumni. We also look at adding faith-based on there, as well as any additional partners with support from EBR staff as well being on there. So in our current focused choice bylaws, we actually have, it's a total member of council. I want to make sure, the focus choice bylaws, about eleven members, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And so in that bylaws, and that, that is the makeup of most of our focused choice schools. The board, the five-oh-one, C-three board may choose to add additional members if they choose to, but that would be their decision. But the core makeup is community, Capital alumni community, the industry partners, you saw Baton Rouge General be a part of that. Also, faith-based will be a part of that, and also EBR staff for additional support for staff. And then, once that board is formed, they, they then can decide on, based on the focus choice bylaws, whether to add someone, take one off, and so that they work through that process.
So the community piece would, would possibly include parents of children that are in the school? I know we're looking at the alumni, and you know, probably some of them have, have kids in the schools.
That's correct. So, so the, once the core part of the board is put together, they then will begin to work through on choosing various components. That's correct. But we, we always, in our current focus choice model, make sure minimally that there is a community members on there, the industry partner, faith-based be a part of that, and also EBR staff, and then they decide on what additional additions on there to be on that. And that's just our core for any focus choice school, so similar to Park Elementary's makeup now.
Okay, well.
And also the Water Coastal School with LSU. There we have. Our Water Coastal School, yeah, that's the same kind of model.
Right. Well, well, I would appreciate you also considering that as we look at the whole reimagine process, you know, to, to add those community members, in particular, parents who are involved, just as we would do with, with, with this model, because they definitely need to, to be at the table in, in the development there, as well as in every community, you know, in particular at, at Park and Capital, and, and basically all of our schools that are undergoing some changes.
Miss Board Member Jackson?
Thank you.
All right. No other comments I see from the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Board Member Lannis?
Sorry, Mrs. Superintendent, I'll just say, point of public, public privilege, personal privilege. We have about fifteen minutes remaining, and we still have a lot left on that, on that new business. So I just wanted to make sure we keep everybody mindful of that.
Yes. Thank you, Board Member Lannis. We will go to item three, J.K. Haynes Charter School Charter Surrender. Consideration of a request to accept the surrender of a charter by J.K. Haynes Charter School Board. Mr. Shamlin, I want to make sure that you can explain to the board the context of this. Will you do that, please?
Yes, and I want to let the board know, we received communication after the 5:00 PM deadline on yesterday. I mailed a memo from their council to the board today ahead of this meeting. Essentially, if you remember, we had a similar situation with children's charter a year ago. One of our charter schools, type-one charters, is surrendering their charter. Per their council, their board has already voted to do so, and so this is just really an action by our board to accept that surrender.
And if I could just add additional context to that, we have been in conversations with the J.K. Haynes Board and their partners. I see Ms. The Haynes families here, where we discussed about becoming the, creating the first teacher school, and the, we've been in communication with the J.K. Haynes School and Board and discussed the proposal concerning that, and also in partnership with LSU and Southern University. I know I did think I saw some of the professors that were here, as I do see Southern University, and I'll give them opportunity to speak. But the goal would be is that, and our discussion is that they would become a focused choice school, and in that focused choice school would become our teacher, focused choice teacher school. As many of you know, there's a pipeline shortage that has been happening around becoming a teacher school. We did a workshop on that. LSU and Southern, their deans and provosts, I also spoke with the president of the university, were super excited about that. And the, we had the conversation with the J.K. Haynes Board and other staff members, and we felt that this would be a great partnership to go in this innovative way, and we're super excited about that. And so that is where we are. But the board action would be to, they would surrender their charter, and then we will then bring the, the proposal for grade configuration at the next board meeting concerning this teacher school. And I also, so what we can do is I'll go through, Board Member Lannis, to see that you have on the queue?
We need a motion.
Oh, you have a motion, sorry.
We need a motion.
You have a motion? Board Member Harrell, motion. Is there a second? Board Member Lannis? All right. All right, Board Member Lannis?
Yes, sir, and I'll be real quick. I just wanted to, because you already acknowledged the Hayes family, and I know this, you know, must have been a difficult decision, but you're making the right choice. And I just want you to know, as from the district level, the J.K. Haynes name will not die. It will continue to live on, and we will continue to uplift that name all throughout this district. Thank you for everything that you have done. His legacy is still here, is still breathing, as long as you are alive, as long as kids can go to that school, it's gonna continue to be that way. to be that way. Thank you.
Okay. Go to, oh, all right, we're going to now go to the public. Let's see, that's item two.
I can't say enough about J.K. Haynes Charter School. I'm normally in opposition of a lot of charters, however, J.K. Haynes Charter is the first charter school that we had in this entire state. J.K. Haynes Charter School first started here as a vision of wanting to help children, all children, socioeconomic disadvantaged, disabled, rich, language speaking, English language learners, it didn't matter. Educating children was the focus and always have been, helping the children and helping their families. This school started off on T.J. Jimson Street at First Mount Zion, and it moved to the Old Harden Elementary Building. This school has been a phenomenal asset to the community and to the state. I would encourage you to do any and everything possible to make sure that J.K. Haynes Charter can actually continue to be the light in the community, in the city, and in the state that it has always been. This school exemplified academic excellence to the extreme. If I could tell Ms. Haynes, both of them, I love them, and I love their school because their school is about making sure that everybody in the family can thrive. Helping every member in the family helps the child, and that's what's important. We talk about social, emotional learning, but they actually show it every single day. I think that our school system can learn a lot from J.K. Haynes Charter School, but I think we just really need to put the funding there to help them. This school, that school made sure that they had actual garden to allow access to fresh food in an area that's a food desert. We need to continue to make sure that schools like that exist and continue to exist in our school system, because they not only have the community partnership, but they also have esports. And we only have three schools in this entire state that have esports, J.K. Haynes Charter, Northeast High, and Southern Lab. So we have to keep schools like this that actually make a difference. I know that Mr. Howard and Mr. Lannis and I don't always agree on everything, but we agree on this. J.K. Haynes Charter is a beacon of light. This is something that we need in our community, because every student, every day, their families, aunts, uncles, grandchildren, and everybody in between, including a dog, matter. And so we need to make sure that we keep them and give them everything and then some. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. I just want to clarify one thing. We actually have esports throughout the entire district. We're actually one of the leading districts of esports, so I just want to make sure we don't just say three. So, but thank you, Ms. Corley, for that. We do need to, Attorney Shamblin, just, we need to make sure, because we're at eight fifty-two?
Yes, so per policy, per district policy, at eight fifty, technically, we need to table this motion temporarily and entertain a motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes. This will be the first time we've done this. If the motion succeeds with an affirmative vote, we return to the tabled motion and continue the meeting until nine thirty. If the motion fails, we will finish the item that was tabled and then close the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Is there a second? Mr. Jackson, a second. All right. All right, Matta?
We need to vote on that.
Yes, sir. We'll have to go to the audience as per motion.
I would just like to also make the comment that we have a couple of time-sensitive deadline items following this motion. So I ask that the board and the audience be very conscious of extraneous comments so we can move along the agenda, because there are some things on the pupil progression and the test security that are time-sensitive that we need to get done.
Who made the second on that motion?
The second was.
Ms. Wade, Ms. Wade Jackson, okay.
Ms. Wade Jackson, sorry.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public on the motion of extending the meeting by thirty minutes. Dr. Finney?
Thank you. I thought it was a bad idea to put an artificial time limit on meetings, and this is why. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other comments? Ms. Corley?
Give me enough time to write. I think that we should extend the meeting, but I don't think that we should leave it germane to thirty minutes, because you have topics that may take longer than thirty minutes, plus you have the presentations. And trying to limit public input, that is going to be a violation of law, and then you will have unnecessary litigation, which I know litigation expenses is one of our presentations that'll be coming up. So you have to make sure that when we extend this meeting, that we do not try to limit the public comment, because then you're interfering with the public's right to actually provide thorough commentary on these topics as described in open meeting law and Robert's of order. So I'm just telling you, I'll be the first one to file, just go ahead and extend the meeting to just say that we're going to extend the meeting until we end it and make it maybe forty-five minutes. I don't think y'all presentations are going to be twenty or thirty minutes. So if we can limit the presentations but not limit the public comments, then we would actually be in compliance with the law. Thanks.
All right. So, thank you, Ms. Corley. No other comments, back to the board. All right, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will go back to the public comments. Dr. James Finney, this is comment on the J.K. Haynes Charter School surrender.
Thank you. It's important that you acknowledge that J.K. Haynes, as a type one charter board, does not intend to operate in the coming year. However, their board has not legally met, based on the fact that their last meeting was virtual, after virtual meetings are no longer legal. And therefore, in order to have everything proper, I would encourage that board to have a legal public meeting, vote to surrender the charter, and do that promptly. And I would encourage the superintendent and his staff to ensure that all charter boards under this administration's control start complying with open meetings law. And with respect to anything you intend to do with focus choice, I will be counting on seeing a copy of those bylaws on those eleven-member committees, because when I asked for the focus choice bylaws, they didn't exist yet. I'm going to guess they really don't exist still, but I'm willing to be proven incorrect tomorrow. Thank you.
Jean Dyer? Or Professor Jean Dyer?
Good afternoon. My book come here.
Professor Dyer, you want to tell me you represent which university?
Yes. Okay, Jean Dyer, Director for Residency School of Education, Southern University. And I'm here to speak on having to approve the J.K. Haynes Focus School, and that we would be willing to work with them and LSU all along in promoting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Storm Matthews?
I was just asked to come up here and ask that whatever was provided to the board on this item also be uploaded to Board Docs, please. Thank you.
I have Ms. Kimberly Haynes, which I'd like to allow, I just want to make sure, Ms. Haynes, one more thing, is there a professor from LSU, anyone from the LSU side here? I think I saw some folks before. Okay, all right. All right, Ms. Haynes?
Good evening, Kimberly Haynes, the current director of J.K. Haynes Charter Schools, Inc. I just want to say on behalf of the Board of Directors, our faculty and staff administrator, and our scholars, we are excited about this next venture. We just celebrated our twenty-fifth, our silver anniversary as one of the oldest charter schools in the state of Louisiana. We are looking forward to twenty-five plus more years with this new initiative. We're very happy Superintendent Narcisse and Attorney Shamblin for working with us on this venture. We just want to make sure that the venture stays as transparent as possible, and that we both, both parties work diligently to make sure that this focus choice school comes to fruition. We appreciate you, Board, Board Member Lannis, and we are looking forward to striving for excellence. This comes at a great time for us, because as we were celebrating twenty-five years with my mother, Diana Haynes, and my father, Maurice Haynes, building this legacy that was named after my late grandfather, J.K. Haynes. He was a true civil rights, teacher rights advocate, and for us to be embarking on this venture, being able to embrace scholars and students who are focused on teaching and leadership skills, we know that this is a win-win for everybody. So we appreciate the opportunity to be in this venture with East Baton Rouge Parish, and we look forward to the many, many roads ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. No other public comments, back to the board. No other comments by the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
The motion carries.
All right. Right before we go, just wanted to thank the Hayes family and the board. This is going to be, we think, tremendous for this community to have a school focus on the teaching profession. When we went and had this conversation with President Shields, the new president at Southern University, and Dean Peoples and the faculty at Southern, as well as Dean Roland Mitchell, who is not here, and also the provost, the new provost at LSU, around this excitement about us creating the first teaching school where the teaching profession, they were super excited about that. We want to thank the Hayes family and the board on embarking with us and entrusting the EBR school system to help with this transition. We will be bringing a proposal back to the new board concerning configuration, but we want to let you know that we are tremendously excited, and this board is also tremendously excited. We did a workshop, and it was very clear that every board member said we needed this in our school system. So we thank you for once again leading the state of Louisiana in this space. Thank you. We will now go to item four, pupil progression revised?
H four.
I'm sorry, H four. Consideration of a request for the approval of the addition to the 2022-2023 pupil progression plan as required by the Louisiana Department of Education. So move, Board Member Goday, is there a second? Second, Board Member Dyson. Any comments from the board? No comment from the board. Any comments from, no comment from the public. We'll go back to the board. Board Member Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse, and I lost my notes right when I needed them around that. But there were some dates on the memorandum that seemed off. It mentioned, I think, 2021, and then something with, anyway, there was some dates in there that were wrong.
Chief Okowski could probably respond to that.
Yeah. If there was a typo, but I think I can lend some clarity to the timeline for you, that might help. On December the second, in their system leaders' call, that's the day after the Cal, the Department of Education informed superintendents and district staff that due to the fact that Bessie changed Bulletin 1566 in October, it's out on notice of intent, it will become official in February of 2023. Then all local districts and charters who serve as their own ally have to adopt an addendum to their pupil progression plan. It's regulatory, there is no prompt where the local agency can respond or have flexibility. And so in that backup, you'll see the Louisiana Department of Education memo with the addendum, the exact verbiage that needs to be adopted, as well as a signature sheet for the superintendent and the board president. This is timely, and we do have to submit it in January.
January 2023, not 2022.
And there's a typo, I apologize. That was in our rush to get this in, because we obviously missed the Cal deadline.
And the submission due date was October 1st, 2021?
That's when we submitted it originally. This addendum is due in January of 2023.
Okay. And then one other thing, in the list of the key performance indicators?
Sure.
1.8 says there is an annual three to five percentage point increase in the dropout rate of the high school students. You meant decrease, right?
We probably meant decrease. I apologize for those typos, we will find that.
Yes, please, yes.
We will. We will, but as you know, pupil progression contributes to many of our KPIs. Thank you, ma'am.
Just wanted to make sure that this wasn't tied into.
No, ma'am, I appreciate that.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Okowski. I see no other questions by the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote. Oh, did we go to the, I thought we did. No public comments, yeah.
The motion carries.
Item H five, test security policy, consideration of request for the approval of the 2022-2023 East Baton Rouge Parish School System Test Security Policy. Is there a motion? Motion, Board Member Howard, is there a second? Board Member Goday, I see no comments from the board. There are no public comment cards. Back to the board. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
All right. Item H six, property casualty insurance, RFP selection, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation of the committee for the selection of Marsh McLennan Agency, Arthur J. Gallagher Insurance Services to provide property and casualty insurance broker services and to authorize the superintendent and general counsel to negotiate and execute a contract, strategic alignment, operational excellence, funding source, general fund. Is there a motion? Motion from Board Member Goday, is there a second? Board Member Howard, there's no comments from the board, and there are no comment cards. We'll be back, no comments, back to the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote. If it's not registered, could we just do a roll call?
Just go ahead, y'all go have the vote again, I cleared it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. There we go. Vote again.
I got you now, but everybody's got to vote again.
Can we call for a roll call vote?
It's a roll call.
Oh, no, this is my last vote, so I would like for it to be a roll call vote, thank you.
Madam Secretary?
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Yay!
Yay.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Without hesitation, yes. Thank you, EBR.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board Member Howard. Presentation, this is, presentation litigation expenses, review of litigation expenses. Mr. Shamlin?
Yes, I should call up Ms. Lopez, and she compiled the numbers for us. I think she can speak to some of this. Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Good evening, Board members. So, I've compiled three years from 1920, 2021, and 2022 because it gives me a full year of litigation expenses. So, for 1920, our budget was $350,000. We spent $366,000. Our workers' compensation claims were $3.5 million, and our risk management claims were $600,000, $27,000. And the reason I mention this is because litigation charges are very hard to judge. You don't know what's going to happen. You don't know what lawsuits are going to pop up. You don't know if someone's going to get hurt. So, all of these things tie into it. So, let's talk about 2021. Our litigation budget was $475,000, but we had an actual budget of $550,000, which seems like an excessive overage. But at that same time, we had workers' compensation claims of $7.3 million and risk management of 2.4. It was an extremely high year. So, those litigation charges are actually much lower than they probably should have been. We did very, very well. We cleared a lot of things off the books that year. We cleared a lot of old claims, things that needed to go away because they just kept piling up, piling up, piling up. 2122, we had an actual budget of $478,000. Our actual was $470,000. We actually came in below. Our workers' claims actually went down to $3 million. Our risk management claims were still up at 2.3, but we're working through that because some cases take years to actually solve. You can see, actually, when they did the actuary cost to the OPEB and the pension, a lot of that stuff, the workers' claims, these, these old cases, these old staff members or whatever that were still in the books are slowly coming off. Therefore, our pension liability, all of our liabilities are going down. So, while, yes, our litigation charges have gone up, we have cleared a lot of old things off of workers' comp. Our workers' comp is going to start going down. I foresee litigation going down, but I can't promise that because, as you know, I mean, we live in a very litigious society. I mean, and once these things come up, we have to deal with them. So, I hope that answers your question. I feel that they have been in perfectly good range. When you compare them to what we do with the funding, they feel comfortable. They're, they're right where they ought to be.
All right. Any questions from the Board? Board Member Lanis?
Yes, just real quick. I was just curious, how many different firms are we currently working with?
We currently have, for litigation purposes, two firms approved by resolution, Phelps, Dunbar, Hammond's and Seals. We utilize some other firms for very specialized work, such as tax election work.
Foley and J. Dell.
So, we have some firms used for specialized work, but our two primary firms are Hammond's and Seals, Phelps, Dunbar.
All right. No other questions from the Board. Thank you, Chief Lopez. We'll move to item number two on presentation's Day of Hope litigation update. Board Member Shamlin?
Again, you made me a board member.
I'm sorry.
We will need, we will need to pause the meeting as we are, we are below a quorum at this point. So, do you want to, we will need to pause the meeting until our fifth member returns. Did she leave?
She did not leave, yeah.
It's temporary.
So, we will pause temporarily until we have a quorum. So we will pause temporarily until we have a quorum. I mean, Councilman Shamlin?
So because of the nature of this next conversation related to Day of Hope, there was a request, actually a vote taken by the board back in October, which failed to seek a report on Day of Hope. As council, I decided to move ahead to provide the superintendent with some internal information for improvements and changes. I've asked Council Dennis Blunt to be here as his firm conducted that for us independently. We'll have to take a vote to go into executive session, because some of the information shared is of a nature that, by statute, it's an exemption from our open meetings law. And so we'll have to entertain a motion and a second to go into executive session, followed by an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the vote of the members present. So I think that's three of five.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Mr. Blue? Is there a second to that?
Mr. Blue.
Okay.
Mr. Blue and Mr....
Ms. Ware Jackson is the second. Okay. All right. Any comments from the board? Ms. Jackson?
No.
No comment? Okay. Then we will go to the public. Dr. Finney?
Thank you. I could be mistaken, but I don't remember that this agenda item had with it the required language with respect to executive session.
I believe it does.
It does. Yes.
I'll go check. I would discourage you from going into executive session, not that it'll do any good. And as the time draws near, I'm tempted to stand here for two hours, 2 minutes and 34 seconds, but I won't.
Any other public comments? Okay. Back to the board. No... Board Member Jackson?
I realize we need to go into executive session, but just so the public will know, the main question is around, you know, what investigation and outreach to parents and students who were impacted has been done. So we'd like to know what that is. So thank you.
Board Member Dyson?
Just real quick. I'd like to make sure that everyone knows that some of us board members were fully aware and had been confirmed that an investigation was ongoing already when the agenda item came about this in the first place. And I'd like to go on record as saying that I had full knowledge, because I do my homework as a board member and knew that going into that vote. Thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Can we do a roll call vote? I didn't get a chance to get it in the system.
Yes, we can do a roll call.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Yay.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Godey.
Yes.
All right. We will go into execo session.